Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 10 reconvened regular assembly meeting. We are in the Mona Lisa Drexler Assembly Chambers, and it's approximately 6 o'clock, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the record, we have Assembly Member Andrew Gray participating telephonically tonight due to an employment-related commitment, which is allowed by our borough code. So, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Logeski?
Here.
Mr. Quist?
Here.
Mr. Tackey?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Major?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
And we have with us City of Norport Rep. Ms. Heading.
Is she there?
Yes, she's here. Okay. And then we have School Board Rep. Ms. Dominique.
Here.
Ms. Dodge?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Super, thank you very much. So, I'm going to give us a safety announcement, so we know how to get out of here if we need to, should an emergency arise. We, of course, have the doors, the double doors we came in through, we would go straight out. We have a single door over here behind the post column, and another door here behind the column. This one go out into your right. This one over here, out into your left.
Okay. We have next an Employee of the Month proclamation. We're having a modified reconvene meeting tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, I hear that we have someone to recognize.
We absolutely do have someone to recognize. It's the fun time when we do have Employee of the Month program where employees pick somebody in our organization that they think is an outstanding employee and providing a high level of service in our community. So, I don't choose this. This is fellow employees. And we do have Bobette McKurgan with us this evening, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas each month, employees of Fairbanks North Star Borough nominate a fellow employee to be recognized as Employee of the Month. And whereas Bobette McKurgan, Administrative Assistant III in the Public Works Department, began her employment with the Fairbanks North Star Borough in June 2010. Whereas in her position, she is renowned for her proactive, can-do attitude, always going the extra mile in her efforts to provide the best possible service to her fellow employees. And whereas Bobette diligently strives to expand her knowledge, never hesitating to take on a diverse range of tasks and assignments. And whereas Bobette has proven herself to be an organized, motivated, dependable, and knowledgeable employee who can handle any circumstance with ease and decorum. That's the important part, the decorum part. Whereas Bobette is a strong team player who never hesitates to jump in, take on a new challenge, and assist in the successful completion of a myriad of projects and assignments. And whereas Bobette's coworkers have expressed their high regard for the positive and enthusiastic manner in which she embraces every challenge she's a pleasure to work with, and they have and they are proud to have her on their team. So now, therefore, I, Carl LeBecce, the mayor, and all that good stuff proclaim Bobette McKurgan Employee of the Month for May 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations, Bobette. We appreciate all of your service and your... So, that takes us to Special Orders Public Hearing, Ordinance Number 2018-20, which is an ordinance appropriating funds as listed for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, ratifying fiscal policies and user fees, and levying taxes. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. It's on page two of our packet. There's a proposed substitute, 2018-20, proposed substitute attachment A, C, and D substitutes, which are on page 48. There's a Finance Committee recommendations on page 95. There'll be a test later to see if you know what page it's on. The public hearing was closed on May 3, 2018, and the motion to adopt is on the floor from May 3, 2018, by Van Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tackey. And that's where we are. I don't believe that the substitute hasn't been moved yet. So, that is where we are.
Substitute, second.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Lawrence to substitute the proposed substitute for... So, Mr. Lawrence, something you want to say about that?
Well, I have a, I'd like to make a motion to amend. There's a lot of lines involved. This is, I'm going to move the printed amendment that would increase operations of Mary Siya to normal operations for the six, first six months of FY '18 and '19. Clerk, do I need to be any more detailed than all?
I'm just trying to look which one we're looking at.
The first, the top one. Is there a second? Mr. Lawrence has moved to add full-time operations at Mary Siya Rec Center for six months. It's been seconded by Mr. Tackey. It is the Parks and Rec Public Works Department, General Fund, and the Division of Recreation, Parks Maintenance, Facilities Maintenance, revenue page 41, Parks and Rec pages 476 to 477, 494 to 499, and Public Works pages 524 to 531. The dollar amount is $201,300. With $5,760 in revenue, a net increase of $195,540. On the proposed amendment, Mr. Roberts is up first.
So, I would speak against this. This only funds Mary Siya for six months with an estimated closure December, and even if we get a bond issue and even if the voters approve that bond issue, it will take much longer than that to put something into operation. I would ask the Assembly to vote this down, and then we can bring up an amendment to restore full-time operations for the next fiscal year for Mary Siya, which, of course, will be subject to Assembly action in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on the proposed amendment, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, that's, my point is that this will be subject to the next assembly in the future, and for that reason, if, if the condition of the building proves to be better than what I suspect it is, then next year's assembly can, can, you know, by ordinance, extend the hours or extend the time period for the operations of Mary Siya all the way, you know, for the final six months of the fiscal year. But, you know, I think that can, that can wait until we know more about the condition of the building.
Mr. Gray, I'm just going to take an opportunity to see if you have anything you wish to say.
Not at all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or debate on this amendment? Thank you, Mr. Tackey.
Second, what Mr. Lawrence has just pointed out, this way we're only increasing our budget at the moment by $195,000 versus like $375,000 about. And then we can actually spend the money to actually get a full report on the building and either increase the appropriations for Mary Siya later on, or, you know, if we find out that, yeah, we are going to need to demolish the building, and we've already made that position, so I'm more in favor of this one.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I want to make sure everyone understands that my intention with this ordinance is that with the amendment that, that I would like, which is this amendment, is to fund it out of the general fund, out of the money that we have in savings, and so it wouldn't impact this year's budget in the same way. Thanks.
Any other discussion on the amendment? I'm going to pass the gavel so that I can speak to this amendment.
All right, Ms. Dodge.
Thank you. I think Mary Siya Rec Center, I'm going to say a little more since I don't usually get to say anything. I think Mary Siya Rec Center fills an important niche in our community. It's important to our seniors, it's important to our disabled people, it's important to people that are rehabbing from injuries or surgery, and to young families. We've had extensive testimony about how Mary Siya Rec Center is equipped with handrails, stairs, ramps, a lift. It's very specialized. It is not a run-of-the-mill pool or facility. I found it compelling that Juno kept their Mary Siya Recreation Center-type facility open, along with their new aquatic center. I feel we have put the cart before the horse here. We need an, we need additional information on, on the condition of the building, as well as how the votes, how the voters feel about the aquatic center come this fall. I support funding a full-year's funding, so we can gather this information, make an informed decision, and the users and the employees can have certainty. I support a minimum of funding through next April or May, so users and staff can at least have use of this facility through the winter, as we, absent three of us, make this decision next year. I urge you to vote no on this amendment and vote yes on the full-time operations. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Quist and Mr. Cooper?
So, I just kind of a question on order. Mr. Roberts has an amendment that, that if we were to want to consider it, we would have to defeat this, or if this were to pass, would he be able to make his motion? At least, my question is, they seem like they're the same, the same item in a way. I mean, would it be appropriate if we were to be considering that to make a motion to amend?
You could certainly amend this amendment to, yes, you could amend the amendment. If you wanted to amend it to some other amendment on our table or something.
Thank you. I'm not going to make a motion to the cabinet.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thanks. Well, I think that both the six-month and the one-year option have valid points. I think it could actually, you know, it's six, one half dozen the other, right? You could wait six months, and if it looks like we need to put more money towards it, we do so at that time. If we funded Mary Siya for another full fiscal year, if three months into it, it looked like the reports came back and it just wasn't feasible to keep it going, then we reappropriate that money back in. So, you know, it's six, one half dozen the other. That said, I think that, you know, I agree with Mr. Lawrence. We don't have the answers that we need yet on some of the studies that we asked for, and we have to put something back in because tonight's night we have to make a decision on the budgets and, you know, see how it goes forward.
Thank you. I have Ms. Major and then Mr. Roberts.
No, I agree with, with Mr. Cooper, and, you know, it's kind of six, one half dozen the other, the one challenge or the one concern that I have with it is I'm not a fan of incremental funding, and I think when you get into incremental funding, it oftentimes ends up costing you more in the long run, and it certainly creates a lot of uncertainty. So, with that, I am in favor of the, the full year and then the ability to reappropriate as time goes on, vice, just the six months, and then bringing this back to the table.
Mr. Roberts?
So, something you need to think about when you're looking at six months is that, yes, the Assembly can make the decision then, but it's the administration who has all the numbers at their tips, who's going to have to actually do the work of putting all that together, which could be requested by an Assembly member, which are going to have a new mayor at that point. And so, you're putting a brand-new mayor on the spot here to ramp up something right after he takes office, if we're going to have it on our agenda by the December timeframe. And that's already tight because we have one meeting in November, one in December, and something can go wrong with a lack of a quorum or a bad notice, and suddenly you end up having to close the facility because you didn't put enough funding into it. So, I speak against six months, and since it was mentioned that I do have the ability to put forward an amendment, I will go ahead and amend this amendment by adding to the budget motion that's labeled to add full-time operations at Mary Siya Rec Center, which has a net increase of $374,130, and it's to reinstate full-time normal operations at Mary Siya for the FY '19, FY '19 operating budget.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Logeski. Do you want to speak to this or do you?
I think I've said everything, but realize, just so the public understands that on the table right now is the funding for the FY '19 year for Mary Siya in full, and once we get done, because this is amendment to amendment, I can't add any more to it, which maybe I should have just included that when I was doing it, but I have an intent to, to put some intent language in to have the administration know that our intent is to operate it for full year, because there'll be a new mayor, and, you know, we don't know who's coming in and what, they're looking at things, but we want to make sure they know the Assembly's intent with this.
Thank you. So, just for the record, what we have in front of us is an amendment to the amendment that increases the dollar amount to $385,660, a net increase of $374,130, and a net increase in revenues of $11,130 on the amendment to the amendment. Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I oppose the amendment to the amendment, you know, not strongly. I mean, Mr. Cooper's got it right. You know, the decision's going to be, the final decision on this is going to be made, you know, probably after, after I'm off the Assembly and he's off, and Ms. Dodge is off, and when we have a new mayor, I think that decision's going to have to be made there. But I'd rather have a decision made in November or December as to what, how much to operate Mary Siya, simply because we'll know more then than we know now. You know, obviously, this budget is such that, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be using savings to operate Mary Siya, whether it's six months or a year, and I just would rather see us budget for six months so that the next assembly and the next mayor can revisit, you know, the operations, what is the reasonable amount of operations for the building.
Okay. Anything else on the amendment to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Logeski?
Well, I'm just wondering where this puts us, because the one thing that's coming up is the report that I believe the mayor is going forward with, the seismic analysis, and there might be something else there. So, is this all irrelevant if Mary Siya comes back as seismically unsound?
It could be, yeah. I mean, if we lose occupancy rating for the building, it closes, and, I mean, then we're stuck. Yeah, so, we're moving ahead on getting that information for you as quickly as we can. There's a walkthrough tomorrow afternoon. I don't remember the exact schedule. I believe it's tomorrow afternoon, a walkthrough with contractors and such. We're out for RFP to do the research on that. There's three critical factors in the building that we need to sort of fore, actually, but anyway, that we need to review per your request, and we're doing that as quickly as we can. I don't know exactly when we'll have an answer. It depends on response from the contractors on our RFP that's on the street now.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, I want to point out that if this amendment to amendment passes, I will then offer one to fund this out of general fund. So, if it gets shut down, then it never impacted the taxpayers directly, and all that money stays in the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thanks. I was just actually going to make Mr. Roberts' point that I think the place that would come from is the general fund fund balance, and if everything fell apart and we had to close the building, we'd just appropriate the money back to the fund balance, so.
Anything else on the, Mr. Logeski?
Yeah, I understand what you guys are saying. It makes perfect sense. So, in fact, this gives us the option of keeping Mary Siya open, or, I guess, the certainty that we have if the report comes back clean enough. But big picture, I'm kind of thinking of what the mayor will probably have to chime in. I'm trying to read your mind a little bit and what you're thinking, because I'm somewhat thinking, thinking, I'm thinking the same thing. Anyway, that is the overall picture here. We, I think it's fair enough to say that the overall budget's going to be unsustainable, largely because of the capital end of things. And so, we absolutely can save Mary Siya for a time if the reports come back okay, but we're, in a certain extent, keen to can down the road, or at least diminishing our resources we have to address the other building problems that we have in the borough. I don't know that I've got much more to say about that, but I just want to make sure it's on the top of everyone's mind before we start voting on these.
Okay. Anything else on the amendment to the amendment? Mr. Cooper?
In response to Mr. Logeski, I completely agree. It's, we have finite resources, and how we spend those resources on our various buildings is a big part of the problem here. I think that, I wanted to make one point, and it was something I think that Ms. Ross sent an email today, which was, give us time to figure out how we can have a solution, right? And so, I think we've got a very active, passionate group of people here who've expressed a lot of interest in finding ways to make this work going forward. And I think that we're going to be looking for your help in making this work too, because we certainly don't have all the resources in the world to make that happen. Now, that's one of the great things about Fairbanks, a lot of people who care about a lot of things, right? And I think from my perspective too, through this process, you know, we've, we've learned a lot about the process. And as we deal with these difficult questions with more difficult buildings that need maintenance, like the Big Dipper, who are going to have a lot of passionate hockey players, and everybody has something in Fairbanks that they love, right? Anybody who's lived here, grown up here, loves something, there's something really special about Fairbanks, and those things get old and they fall apart, and, not unlike me and some of us, right? And so, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with that as a community. And, you know, I think that this process here with Mary Siya as the first attempt to tackle this problem has been challenging and a little bit painful at times, but we've, we've learned, and we're just going to have to keep tackling it. So, thanks.
Okay. Anything else on the amendment to the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll, and it won't carry the main motion, the main amendment. Thank you. Mr. Logeski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Eight-one.
And I can't see there, Mr. Gray, I'm presuming you'll let me know if you need to change your vote.
I will.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Roberts, you had your hand up.
Yes, so, I'd like to amend this motion before us so that the funding for this motion is provided out of the general fund.
I think it's already, it says general fund.
Is that, you believe that that's included? I see it says general fund up there. Can we get clarification from Finance that they take this amendment to mean that?
For the, for the listening public, we all have a, and for this public, we have an amendment in front of us, and it shows the source of funds, and that's what we're talking about.
So, typically, at the end of all your motions, we ask how you want to balance the budget, which could be from fund balance, could be from changing something, you know, like facilities maintenance, reserve contribution, or, so if you specifically want this to come from general fund fund balance, you should move that and vote on that.
So, I will move that then for this coming out of general fund, and I can speak to why if I get a second.
Okay. So, it's been moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Cooper, that this be specifically drawn from general fund on the, on the motion?
So, every year, I've always made a general fund motion to fund, of course, at a level to keep the mill rate the same. And then there's funding that the mayor's requested, which I believe his intent was for us to fund out of general fund, whatever we ended up over the budget that he brought forward. So, that's another level. And then, there's complexity in that as far as, I wouldn't want this to fail because that motion failed at the end. I want this to stand on its own, and then everything else, we'll still have that same motion, but it'll be separate from the Mary Siya debate. And so, everyone can vote on that, not voting on Mary Siya at that point in time, they're voting on it now.
Okay. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment to the amendment to specifically draw this from general fund? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Is this an amendment to the amendment?
It's an amendment to the amendment.
To the one-year amendment or?
Yeah, to the one-year amendment. That's correct, the one year that was just adopted.
We voted on that, so it was.
We voted to make it the amendment.
Okay, I see. All right.
That we're considering. I know. It becomes challenging. We can use a little scoreboard. So, we are on the amendment to the amendment. Any further discussion? Mr. Gray?
Nope.
Okey-dokey, thank you. Yes, Mr. Logeski?
So, we're about, what, 1.8 million-ish above the target reserve? I don't know what, what other people had plans for for that 1.8 million, what they wanted to do with it. Just curious.
Well, we probably won't get that answer, but we can at least find out how much above the target we were. That answer might come later after we finish with the amendment.
I just realized, I don't have the, I don't have the most current one. I don't have your actions from the April meetings. I apologize. I'll look it up online and get you an answer.
Thank you.
It's good.
Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I don't know if this helps, Ms. Brady, we received an updated fund balance report today.
What?
It's $25,194,307.
It's a little over two.
And the target reserve amount is $23,40,799.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the proposed amendment to the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Nine-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, I'm assuming that you'll tell me if you want to.
Of course.
Okay. So, that takes us back to the amendment as amended. Mr. Roberts?
So, had passed out a piece of paper with an intent statement on there. I move to attach this intent statement to attachment D under Parks and Recreation, and it says, "It is the intent of the Assembly that the administration operate the Mary Siya Recreation Center facility for the FY '19 year unless an alternative is approved by the Assembly."
There is a second to Mr. Roberts' proposed intent statement.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Logeski.
Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded that we add an intent statement that it is the intent of the Assembly that the administration operate the Mary Siya Recreation Center facility for the FY '19 year unless an alternative is approved by the Assembly. Mr. Roberts, on the, anything else you wish to add?
So, this is really, while this mayor knows our intent as he's sitting in this room, we'll have a new one come this fall, and we want to make sure that this is on paper and publicly known, that the intent of the Assembly putting this money in was that it would keep operating, since it would be possible to put the money in and then still have it not operated. So, that's all this is.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, the wording, unless an alternative is approved by the Assembly, what if the tests that are going to be conducted for the next few weeks show that the building is, is dangerous and not occupied, should not be occupied? Are you suggesting that it's our intent that they keep operating throughout the entire fiscal year anyway?
No. My intent is that the Assembly would then take action, and so they might call a special meeting. Hopefully, they actually get these tests done before the end of this fiscal year, and so it might change before you even hit this amendment coming into effect, because right now it's funded through June. And in fact, this amendment is only for the FY '19 year, so if he got these tests and found something catastrophic before the end of June, then this wouldn't tie the administration's hands. In fact, it's intent language, and technically, I'm not sure it ties their hands anyway, but I wanted to put it out there.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
I don't know. Well, assuming that the administration is at least somewhat bound by the intent language, how does it, simply because this intent language becomes undoable if the, if tests show that the building shouldn't be occupied, how does that solve the problem? The intent language is still going to be in the budget.
So, okay, I guess I might be missing what you're saying, because the Assembly can take action, but I would also point out that there are emergency situations in life that happen that you can intend a lot of things. If the city said you have to shut down because their building inspector said it had to happen, then there wouldn't be much choice in the matter anyway, and I don't think that this would override something like that, but the attorney could speak to that.
That's correct. There's, I mean, frankly, the intent statement and even the funds don't require that the facility be operated. I mean, the administration could decide it is going to close at certain days of the week, things like that. I mean, those are typically not legislative matters, they're administrative matters.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have absolutely every intent of doing just what you are requesting to do. So, we will give it our best-faith effort to operate the facility, and that's fine. We will do that. And if something comes up that's an issue from any of these reports, if it's a small issue, we can chat about it. And if it's a major, if the city inspector does pull our occupancy rating, well, depending on whether or not he gives us any time, we'll keep it open as long as we possibly can, and I'll come back to you with information as quickly as it's available.
Any other questions or discussion on the next? Mr. Quist?
Thank you. I'm curious as to why this is really necessary. I mean, it seems to me that if we adopt the amendment as we've already amended it and then, and then adopt the budget, including funding to operate the facility in FY '19, to me, I mean, that is a stronger statement than an intent statement. And I would like to think that the administration, when Assembly's budget money in a certain way, see that as an intent for that money to be used in that way. So, I mean, I, I don't disagree with the message, but I don't see that it's particularly necessary, so I won't be voting for it.
Okay. Anything else on the proposed amendment to the amendment? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, you know, I think it's important that not just the administration, but the public knows our intent, and that they know this past, and if a future administrator
And, but again, making sure that the assembly can change their mind if they find out something needs to be done in the future.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment that adopts the intent statement that has been proposed by Mr. Roberts? I think we're ready. Clerk?
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Logueski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven zero.
We are back. Thank you. We are back to the amendment as amended. Anything else on this amendment? Or are we ready to vote on it? Clerk, we look, no, Ms. Logueski?
Well, I just wonder what, where we're going to be at 12 months from now. I don't want to see the same thing repeat itself and have everyone, all the Marysi users coming out and say, hey, we, you know, we're on the chopping block, save us again. I just, I don't know exactly what solution it is. I've brought it up before. I kind of would love to see a nonprofit coming to take the facility over and run it. But if this happens every year, I'm just, that's not right for anybody. And I don't know if the others have thoughts on it that they would like to share. But I am thinking about what's happening in 12 months from now with Marysi.
Anybody else on the amendment? Mr. Gray?
No.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, I think we're...
I think I'll vote.
Okay, very good. I'm glad you clarified that. Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment as amended. Yes, yes, mister? The amendment is, has taken this, the amendment would fund Marysi Rec Center for one year at full operations. It would specify that it comes from general fund, and it would have the intent language that has, that it is the intent of the Assembly, the administration, operate Marysi Rec Center for the fiscal year 19 unless an alternative is approved by the Assembly. So that's the amendment as amended in front of us. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, mister Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Logueski?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Nine zero.
The Marysi Rec Center is funded for another year. And so... Okay. Does anyone have, and Mr. Roberts?
So, another sheet in front of you. I'm moving to amend substitute attachment D intent statements to change the intent of the multi-year and capital projects budget code enforcement cleanup project to limit the funds used to vehicle cleanups to read as follows. It is the intent of the FNSB Assembly that the code enforcement cleanup project is to finance vehicle cleanups when voluntary compliance efforts, including issuance of citations, have been ineffective to include encroachment and abandoned vehicle removal. So, I am removing the words property and the words and cleanups have been ordered by the court. And I can speak to that if I get a second.
Second.
I'm just, just give me a minute while I mark it up, okay? So you're removing property, you're inserting vehicle, and you're removing and cleanups have been, there's another copy somewhere.
Yep.
Right, thank you. So, it's been moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Logueski to amend substitute attachment D intent statements to change the intent of the multi-year and capital projects budget code, thank you, enforcement project cleanup to limit the funds used to vehicle cleanups to read as follows. It is the intent of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Assembly that the code enforcement cleanup project is to finance vehicle cleanups when voluntary compliance efforts, including the issuance of citations, have been ineffective to include encroachment and abandoned vehicle removal. You should speak to that, Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So, so this cleanup project fund came up in the Assembly meeting for $100,000, which was then reduced to 20. And we stated a large part of the intent was that since we started with a resolution a year or two ago, increasing the amount of enforcement against properties called junkyards and those kinds of zoning enforcement projects, that they wanted to be able to clean up a property if the time came when they've moved through the court system and to be able to do it. And then also, they mentioned that they wanted to be able to remove cars from public right of ways, that they were able to do it, and maybe some other vehicle cleanups, that people dump a vehicle on borough property or something like that. So, obviously with this amendment, I'm saying I have no problem with the vehicle cleanups. Property is a much larger issue. I was talking to Mr. Sadley, that there's an often spoke about thing that happened 20, 30 years ago, when we went after junkyard owner, and the borough went all the way through this pro, long process, went all the way through the court system, got permission to go clean up his property, to take his property, basically, to taking his property. Now, it turns out, what I didn't realize, I was talking to Mr. Sadley today about this to get more of the details, because he sent an email that referenced some of them a few weeks ago. And it turns out, it wasn't general use property that this was, so it actually was legal to have a junkyard there. But his only problem was he didn't have a fence, which kind of goes beyond zoning, you know, you can't be grandfathered for not having a fence, basically. So, he's required to put a fence up, and he wouldn't do that. Now, one thing I was thinking about with that is just, you know, maybe it's cheaper sometimes to put a fence up than it is to clean all the property off. I don't know. But just thinking about how you spend that money, he was talking about the decisions the Assembly had to make, that they were approached with this deal that, you know, we're going to try to clean it up, and we're going to try to bill them through the PFD, or we go to try to do a garnishment, and we tried to eventually recover that money over many years, it seemed like. And so they were presented with this, the Assembly, and the Assembly didn't want to go through this very complex process, unsure of what would actually result and if we'd ever see any money back. So, it wasn't just about spending money, which is what's often brought up, is how the Assembly didn't want to spend money. It's much more complex than that when the Assembly was faced with it 30 years ago. They had a lot of different questions on it, and he was bringing up these concerns to me. And I'm bringing all that up just to make the point that these properties can be complex, and especially with our very broad, broad definition of junkyards that we have in code that hasn't been looked at since the 80s. When this Assembly passed the resolution saying we want more enforcement, they talked about how we would revisit code and make sure that we're enforcing what we want to enforce, that the code is where we want it. But that's never been done with junkyards. But yet, that's the one we're getting the most complaints, and we're looking at doing action on. What would happen is if we put this fund in and some more money got in there, enough to actually fund a cleanup, which would be more than the $20,000 in it, is that that could all be done without the Assembly ever knowing about it. The one possible notice they might get is that the attorney might inform us when we go to, go into court to take the owner to court. We'd just get a notice of that. But otherwise, we'd find out about all the property being taken when we read about it in the paper. So it's, the Assembly would be giving up their discretion in that case and their responsibility to evaluate those facts with these cases. So, what I think needs to happen, the proper procedure, is if somebody wants to do this and create a fund for this purpose, for the purpose of the property cleanups, they need to bring an ordinance forward. Right now, this fund has no parameters. That intent, which I'm modifying a little, that's it. There's no rules on this fund, even like where the money goes back, or that maybe the money we recover from the owner after a court case goes back in the cleanup fund. There's no, there's no rules here, except our own standard rules for handling funds. So, we need to have some consideration of that. And I would see in that ordinance that you'd at least want a memorandum to the Assembly that this is going to happen, that somebody could pull off the consent agenda if it was on there, and talk about it during a meeting, and have a discussion, and get the facts from the administration. So it's not just happening. We are responsible for knowing what's going on. And in the almost six years I've been on the Assembly, it's always saddened me when I find out about something by reading in the paper or somebody calling me that I should have known about. And this administration's been very good at trying to inform us ahead of time. But we've had plenty of those cases where we found out after the fact about things. So I don't think that the Assembly should jump into abdicating responsibility. But what this is about is the process involved with that. If somebody wants to do this and do a property cleanup, which it kind of seemed like the majority of the Assembly wanted to do, they should bring forth an ordinance that lays out the parameters needed. And maybe we should also bring forth something to look at the junkyard code to make sure it's where we want it before we go down this road. This is a major road. Most people don't understand how little amount of property on your property makes you a junkyard in this town. There's a lot of people who would qualify. I'm not going to mention any names, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of people out there. And so, we need to be very careful. We're going to have a new administration, we don't know what direction that's going to go. And the Assembly should be responsible to put good parameters in there. So, for now, I just want to take this cleanup fund, make it about vehicles, and the Assembly can modify it later or create a different fund, but they can put some parameters on it and bring that forward at a later date. We'll have a public hearing on it, we can have a big discussion. That's the way we should be doing things. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Mr. Cooper, Mr. Tackey, and then Mr. Lawrence.
Question from Ms. Dolan. Before the borough tried to get a court order to enforce a citation or some kind of injunction to remove property, would you need Assembly approval to do that, or would you do that, able to do that on your own?
No. So, the way Title I works, we don't give more than two citations in a calendar year and after two, then they're supposed to refer it to legal for different action, which would be the filing of an injunction. Actually, your code doesn't require me to notify you, it requires the mayor to notify you of non-routine litigation. So, we could file, and then the mayor could notify you, but we would get our authority from the administration before filing.
Right. And so that would be a situation where the administration would notify us, but we wouldn't necessarily approve it.
Correct.
Okay. And if I, a comment. I think that, I understand where Mr. Roberts is going here, but I, one, I think that property is the right thing to be cleaning up, because we're actually taking the car off the property and hauling it away, so we're cleaning up the property, not the vehicle. I like having court orders in there, because it's actually more due process to have a court say that you got to remove it than even just us. And I guess the thing I wouldn't be opposed to would be adding language in that says, after approval by the Assembly or something like that. So, I guess I'd speak against the amendment in its current form, but it would be opening to add, adding some language that gave the Assembly more authority.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify that when Mr. Roberts asked for language here, he wanted to limit the code enforcement cleanups to vehicles only. And so, under Title 12 encroachments and Title 10 abandoned vehicles, we would give due process, we would give notice of the vehicle unless there was some serious hazard. But we wouldn't typically go get a court order before we handle that. That's not the process that's currently in code. So I think the difference is, if we're talking code enforcement generally, and we're talking property cleanups under Title 18, or if we're talking vehicle only. So, it had previously been drafted, my understanding was it was code enforcement generally, which was going to include Title 18 code enforcement, such as junkyards. So this would restrict this, in my opinion, to strictly Title 10 and Title 12, because that's the only place that we do abandoned vehicle and encroachment removal. So we don't go get court orders before we would do that. We have a different legal process that we follow.
I guess, I was looking at the, the language that Mr. Roberts proposes to remove, in parentheses or brackets, and cleanups have been ordered by the court. I reviewed that as both requirements having had to have been met before the funds could be used for cleanup. So, not only would they have to, citation's been ineffective, but a court order had been issued by the court before we could use the fund.
So that would be the case if we were doing it as the code enforcement cleanup of property. So in other words, we're going on someone else's property, we would go get a court order before we do that. But if he's limiting us to encroachment and abandoned vehicle removal, we wouldn't be going and getting court orders first. Those requirements in our code are basically you're within 10 feet of a travel roadway, or you're interfering with the proper use of a roadway. So we have due process and notice requirements that we have to give, but a court order wouldn't be a part of our procedure.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I have Mr. Tackey, then Mr. Lawrence, then Ms. Major.
I'm speaking against the amendment as well, and it was pretty much directly along the same lines as what Mr. Cooper was just about to point out, or had just pointed out. It feels a little interesting that it would be cleaning up property before having a court order, but after hearing Ms. Dolan. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, and then Ms. Major.
You know, I would remind this Assembly that this is a legislative body. And this legislative body, in the past, has passed code, passed ordinances prohibiting junkyards and defining junkyards. And, you know, just, just for the record, a junkyard means the use of more than 1,000 square feet of a lot or parcels under common ownership for a salvage operation, including but not limited to the storage or sale of junk, or the collection, dismantlement, storage or salvage of junk. I don't know if we need to work on that definition or not, but the point is, our role is to, is to, is to provide for, for rules as to how people can use their property. And it's up to the executive branch, up to the administration, to enforce those rules. That's not what we're called to do. We've done so with, with junkyards, or this is, you know, prior assemblies have, and we can always change the definition if we feel like it. But, you know, I would point out that, that of all the complaints about property use that are lodged with this borough, 80% of them are junkyards. I mean, that's by far the biggest problem in the eyes of the members of this community. It's junkyards. And to, to, to not address dealing with them, I think is, is irresponsible, and counter to what, you know, what the people want and what the, and what the law says. Now, this morning, I got a call from a constituent who lives next to the junkyard that we're talking about, that was litigated 20 years ago, and went, went all the way to the Supreme Court, the borough prevailed, they had every right to, to clean, to, to remove the junk from the, from the owner's property, according to Ms. Dolan. The neighbors had offered to contribute $15,000 to help with the cleanup costs, and were looking to the borough to pay the balance, which was about $15,000 more. And, and the Assembly voted no, which, you know, I don't get, but, but I know that this constituent I talked to today has been looking at that junkyard for 20 years. And he's had it, he's totally fed up with it. And so, you know, I certainly strongly vote against this amendment. I think it was a mistake not to leave $100,000 in this fund, because we need to address junkyards. We really do. It's the, it's the biggest property, land use problem in the borough by far.
I have Ms. Major, Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Mayor.
So I guess my question is really whether it's for Ms. Dolan or for the mayor. My concern would be removal of the term property and replace it with the term vehicle, and whether or not that would restrict then, if other legitimate, either other legitimate items need to be removed that might be of a significant size or, you know, stature that, if that would, you know, if this intent language would prevent that from happening. And then whether or not also included would be any, you know, ground contamination or any, you know, environmental, you know, if it's a vehicle that's leaked, if this is just restricted to vehicles, then would it limit the ability to do some additional cleanup that might be necessary?
So to answer your first part, we would take the intent statement as this is how this fund is supposed to be used, and it would be limited to vehicles. As to the second part, this fund was never, I don't think, intended to do the environmental cleanup. It's not really our role. Our code doesn't require those types of things, so that would be a DC-type function, not ours.
So if you saw, you know, a, a big oil leak or something under when the vehicle was picked up, then that would just go to a different altogether process?
Correct. We wouldn't do that cleanup.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Mayor.
So, a couple members were talking about the vehicle cleanups, and it almost sounded like they thought that we would be going onto other people's properties to take these off. And we might, if their property happens to be next to a right of way, and if it's right next to it. But, and the attorney can correct me here, but I don't think this language here, I don't think our code allows us to go onto property, not counting what, when we're dealing with the right of way issue, and take a vehicle off that property, even if it's a junk vehicle. That would come into the junkyard ordinances if it qualified with a thousand square foot, which isn't hard to get to with vehicles. And so, unless the attorney says that I'm looking at it wrong, I'm thinking this only means vehicles that are interfering in the right of way, or they're abandoned vehicles on our property. That's what, in my head, I was thinking of. And so, if the attorney wants to clarify if there's anything more...
No, I think you're correct.
Right. So I just want to make sure that that was clear, because it didn't sound like from some of the statements that people realized that. So, I guess what I'll say is that doing all this in this little intent paragraph, creating this whole fund, it's not the right way to do, it's a sloppy way to do something of such impact. We're, we're taking people's property and livelihood. Some people have got some heavy equipment lying around that people consider junk, okay? I mean, I went to Alaska yesterday, I walked through Alaska Land, showed my wife all the old pieces of equipment there. Technically, those are junk, okay? I like them being there, and I'm not going to complain. But some people have that kind of junk around in Fairbanks, and we're the kind of place that has that. And we just want to be careful about that. This is, it's really a major thing that I don't think the Assembly would want to give up their responsibility in this and have to answer to the public saying, why did you just take all my '55 Corvette collection or whatever? So...
Mr., oh yes, Ms. Dolan and then Mr. Mayor.
If I could just clarify that, and I'm not leaning for against this, I view this as a policy call, but the Assembly passed a resolution intending that a code enforcement program commence, and they expressed an intent to fund that program. So we have, through your legislative powers, we have code that we had not been enforcing. And so there was a policy decision made of, instead of repealing code, to commit to enforcing it. And so, just so we're clear on what my office is going to do, if there isn't funding and there isn't support for code enforcement, is we will again, limit our code enforcement program. So we're not going to go get court orders and expend borough resources and taxpayer resources if this body doesn't want us to. But then we really need to take a look at code and actually take it off the books, because your code is law. And so right now, you have laws that we aren't actively enforcing.
Right. And, and all I'm saying is that if the Assembly wants that, that it should be brought forth with a few more parameters on how that's used, so that we can answer the public about its use and what's going on. And, well, I had one other point, I can't remember at the moment.
Okay. We'll come back. Mr. Mayor.
So the attorney covered quite a bit of what I was going to say here, that, you know, the Assembly asked us to get more engaged in this, and I said we'd need to have a fund and some money, and that was the intent. So I brought back essentially what the Assembly was asking for. We don't take this sort of thing lightly, as far as going out and enforcing these kinds of codes. And I think it's being characterized as we might be somewhat frivolous and just go out and take somebody's property, and we don't do that. The process starts with at least a warning from code enforcement, without a citation, just a chat with the owner. Typically, it's more than one, and the owner of the property has the opportunity to call me and say, hey, wait a second, your code enforcement officer's mistaken here, or there's extenuating circumstances. And we do our best to work with people. The citation process starts when a homeowner who's clearly in violation tells us they're not going to do anything about it and not work with us. And then we go to the citation process. A citation can be appealed, and they can take that to court. Then we have to do a second citation, and that can be appealed, and that can go to court. And then if we're still on this trail, after all of that, then we go to court and have the judge decide whether or not we can do this. So, you know, it's already a four-step process, and we're not going to invest that time, money, and energy in something if, as it happened in the case that you're referencing from a few years back, if it dead-ends there. We don't have the resources to waste our time, money, and energy. And so, you guys decide, if you want the codes enforced, we'll do it. And if, but you need to commit to that. And if you don't, if you think we need to change them, that's your prerogative too, and we'll do as per directed here. But this mixed message is, is very challenging for us to try to enforce and do something about. And it's been going on for a long time, and that's why we haven't been enforcing the codes. So, I hope you can send a clear message with where you want us to go with this. Thank you.
Mr. Tackey, then Mr. Cooper, then Mr. Roberts.
Well, I obviously want, my intent to be clear, that I want us to enforce our rules. It's how I voted for the resolution. I'm a little dismayed by the mischaracterization that Mr. Roberts puts forth, that we're going to come out and steal people's property after the fact that there has to be a court order that we have right here. It says, and cleanups have been ordered by the court. That means the judicial branch has weighed in on this, and the fact that you haven't followed the zoning codes of your community in which you chose to live. So, I am definitely voting against this amendment, and I would urge the rest of the Assembly to do so if you voted for the resolution that we had passed earlier this year.
Mr. Cooper?
I think Mr. Tackey stole all of my points. As one of the proponents of the resolution setting a priority for code enforcement, obviously, I, I think that, and I said, I said it then, and I'll say it now, either we enforce the code that we have, or we take that code off the books. I mean, there's no sense in having code that we don't enforce or don't follow. It creates a lot more problems than not having it in the first place, I guess. So I agree with the mayor, you know, we have to, we have to, if we're going to take us, the position that we're going to enforce the code we have, we have to have the funds to do that. And then I just, you know, Mr. Roberts made a clarifying point that this isn't going onto people's property and taking their property, this is cleaning up stuff that's in an encroachment or a right of way or abandoned on borough property, and then gave, made a passionate argument about taking stuff that was on people's property. So I just want to be clear that this, if you leave your car in the middle of the road, and it's blocking the ability of a fire truck to go down, I absolutely think we should put resources to get that car out of the way. If you abandon property someplace that's not supposed to be, we absolutely should take, spend resources to get it out of the way. So I, I don't support the amendment at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
So the point that I'd forgotten before is, I just wanted to clarify what I think Mr. Lawrence meant, and that is, when he's talking 80% of complaints, which, I don't know if that's the number, but I would take that for the sake of argument, because I can't remember what the number is, but that would be of Title 18 complaints, code enforcement. I'm sure that doesn't include animal control and all the other enforcement type complaints. So I would point out that this isn't about whether or not we should enforce the junkyard code, okay? Everyone, I talked at length when we did the resolution about the problems with the junkyard code, and Mr. Sadley's talked a lot about that, given a lot of testimony to that. But that's not what this is about. This is about, how does the Assembly do its business? What kind of oversight are we doing? How are we setting up something that's so monumental? You're talking destroying people's lives when you take their property. For some people, and we've had the witnesses here, that's their asset. That's what they've got. They've got that heavy equipment, and that's all they have that's worth something. And they could maybe sell that someday and get the money they need in their retirement years when they're not using that equipment anymore. It is a taking, and because you're not paying them for their property, you're taking it, and they get nothing. Okay? So yeah, sure, the court ordered it, but that doesn't make it not a taking, okay? You take their property, and they get nothing. But what I'm doing with this amendment is taking it down to vehicles that are encroaching, getting in people's way, not on their own property. The junkyard ordinance is about property on your property. And I'm saying, we shouldn't go in there without the Assembly at least knowing about It's just not the right way to do this, to on the fly set up this fund, which was done as an amendment to the budget. It didn't even come in the budget. It was amended into the budget as we went. So if you believe in code enforcement, which is not what this amendment's about, then bring up an ordinance later to create this fund with the right parameters so that we're doing government right, and we're just not throwing something out there like mud on the wall hoping it'll stick because we want this end result. Sure, you want the end result. We all want everyone to have these nice clean yards. I sure wish I could do better on mine, but I work at it. We all want that, but how do you achieve that? There's a right way and a wrong way, and just throwing it to administrator, which is gonna change out in six months, we have no idea who's coming along and saying, "We're gonna totally trust you to just handle this," because we don't wanna touch it anymore. We created the code, you go deal with it. We should never be that hands-off. We should always have some skin in the game, and we should always be paying attention, even if that skin in the game is just our time, because we're having to take the energy to have public hearing on the issue, or even have it on the consent agenda so people can come testify on it. Thanks.
Okay, I don't have anyone else on my list. Ms. Quist.
Thank you. I'd speak against this amendment, and I feel like the amendment's sponsor is conflating these two issues again of the issue of having vehicles in a public right-of-way versus the issue of junk on somebody's private property and the two distinctly different processes. And there's a strong implication, or I'm sure Mr. Roberts will correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but I'm getting the implication that we're somehow, if we don't adopt this amendment, we're somehow endorsing the taking of private property from private citizens off of their own private property without due process. And I feel that's a mischaracterization. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Gray, is your hand raised? He's sending me, he's trying to let me know. Okay, thank you.
My point was that it's early, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lawrence's hand is raised then.
Well, you know, with regards to junkyards, and this Assembly really has, I haven't dealt with the issue that I can recall all that much, but first of all, junkyards are prohibited in certain zones, certain zones, residential zones, I think they're totally prohibited. But elsewhere, they're allowed as long as there's a screen, as long as there's a fence that will prevent, you know, that will obscure the personal property from neighbors. And so we're talking about a property, you know, if we have to cite and then take a property owner to court to get an injunction, requiring them to remove the property or allowing the borough to do so, we're talking about a person who refused to put up a fence. And I don't really have much sympathy for that. If they're in the business of selling junk, then have them put up a fence. That's all it takes. That's what the code requires, is putting up a fence. We're talking about the people who don't wanna put up a fence.
Mr. Mayor, was that a hand raise or a head scratch?
Oh, head scratch.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on this proposed amendment to the intent language? Seeing none, Clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Gray.
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Logeski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? Two, seven? It fails two, seven? Mr. Quist?
I'd like to make an amendment. Appendix E, user fee schedule, page 757, library services. I'd move to delete practice piano fee.
So, Mr. Quist has moved to change Appendix E, user fee schedule, page 757, delete practice piano fee. Is there a second?
What's the amount of the fee?
What's the amount of the fee he would like to know?
It's as proposed by the administration, fifteen. I believe that it remained unamended in the end after Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
I will second it for the sake of discussion.
For the listening audience and the, those of us, those of you in the room, we spent an hour, hour and a half, I'm, forty-eight minutes earlier, but apparently we have another few to spend.
Thank you for allowing me to make the motion. I appreciate, I think this is important enough that we can at least spend a few more minutes discussing it. As I mentioned, we had a very robust discussion on this in Finance Committee. And so, just briefly sum up for everybody else who's not as close to this as we are, the administration has proposed an FY19 budget, a couple of changes to user fees and library services, one of which is to add a fifteen-dollar fee for use of the practice piano, which is in the conference room there. There's currently no fee for its use. It gets used a couple of times a day. The, we talked about amending it out or amending it down. So the reason I'm making this motion is, it was pretty clearly established that this fifteen-dollar fee is going to basically prohibit the use of the practice piano by the vast majority of the people who do use it. And it's not going to really increase revenue to the borough that much, because we also learned that there's a significant cost with collecting this type of fee that's like somewhere in the ballpark of like seven or ten dollars. So we are otherwise in the same budget, increasing the fee to rent that same room. So if you wanted to reserve that room, to like lock down your practice time, you could do that, and that would cost you twenty-five dollars. What I'm proposing is that stays, but the practice piano fee itself goes away so that if the room's not otherwise being used, that somebody can use the piano without having to pay the fifteen-dollar fee. One thing that you won't see on your schedule here, but you might recall from Finance Committee, we did amend to include language that said specifically, if somebody has paid to reserve the room, they don't then need to pay on top of that to preserve the piano. So, I mean, just to sum up, I feel like this fee is so high that you might as well not have a practice piano there. And the ideal solution would be to find ways to charge smaller amounts of money that are more appropriate to this. If you look at our other fees, it just doesn't make sense when you can rent a pool for thirty dollars, including lifeguards, but you have to pay like fifteen dollars to use a piano. In any ways, so that's it, just moving to delete it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And please, I wanna be clear, my comment was certainly not meant to demean the importance of having this conversation. And for the Assembly members and public, this is on page eighty-two of our packet substitute attachment C, user fee schedule. And is there any other discussions on deleting the piano practice fee? Okay, I don't see any. Clerk, sounds like we must be ready to vote. Thank you. Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Logeski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? Three, six? The proposed amendment fails three, six. Any other? Yes, Mr. Quist?
I'd like to make another motion, if I may. The clerk contributed a minute ago. I would like to move for the solid waste disposal division budget, I'd like to move to amend on pages five fifty-nine to five sixty-seven by reinstating all proposed decreases with quote solid waste efficiencies and cost savings reductions listed in column T, which decreases line fourteen by sixty thousand two hundred, line fifteen by twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty, line nineteen by sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, line twenty by thirty-seven seven hundred and eighty, line twenty-one by sixteen thousand one fifty, line twenty-two by seven thousand seventy, line thirty-two by seventy-three thousand three hundred, line sixty by thirty-one thousand, line sixty-two by eighteen thousand, line sixty-six by twenty thousand, and line seventy-seven by one hundred and six thousand dollars for a total decrease of four hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And to allow the Financial Services Department to make any changes necessary to reflect the intent of reinstating all lines with quote solid waste efficiencies and cost savings reductions.
Okay, so Mr. Quist has moved, and Mr. Gray has seconded, to amend back in the solid waste disposal division budget monies that were removed, that were essentially closing, he wants to add it back in, and this would result in the closure of the transfer sites and the dump on Sunday and Monday, I presume.
Yeah, I could speak to this.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Quist.
So, thank you for the second, Mr. Gray. So what I'm proposing is that we amend back in. So we had, you know, a lengthy discussion in Finance Committee about this as well, came out with that five-four, I don't imagine that changing, but I thought, I think this is a great idea, and I think that this is a good venue for it as well. It's a more public venue than our Finance Committee. So what this would do is it would, this is for solid waste division, so this is for the dump, so this has like a kind of a ripple effect to the transfer stations, but is, this motion's limited to solid waste. And what it would do is change the budgeting so that the solid waste collection would be on a five-day schedule. The memo from, we have a memo dated from the first from the administration that kind of goes into this into more detail that we had requested in our Finance Committee meeting. As a result of the five-day schedule at the dump, there are quite a bit of savings, which are detailed here and we've heard about, you know, and then for, you know, and then again for those who might not be as familiar with this as us, so then as a result of the dumping on a five-day schedule, that would limit the ability for the transfer sites to be open and would result in what's proposed in a six-day schedule at the transfer sites, a Monday through Saturday schedule. And we've talked about it a lot more in the memo, I think explains it very well. So that's all for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Roberts, Mr. Tackey, Mr. Cooper, and Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, Mr. Quist explained it somewhat, I just wanna make sure the public understands it. What we're talking about is because of shutting down the landfill a couple days, we would shut the transfer sites down a couple days approximately, and so you're looking, they were mostly talking Sunday and Monday, shutting down the transfer sites. So you wouldn't be able to take your trash anywhere on those days. And so that's what we're talking about here, and I feel that since that's the most used service the borough does, almost a hundred percent of the people use that service, that, and with schedules out there, that people need those days at that transfer station to be able to dump their trash, and I don't think that this is the right alternative to cut that out, at least for the weekends, and that was the big answer. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tackey, and then Mr. Cooper, and then Mr. Lawrence.
I'm just gonna say the same thing I said before in Finance Committee, it seems kind of like, not the best place to try and find savings when it's only four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of like a twelve million dollar budget. To spend that extra amount to keep the services open for seven days rather than for five days and to keep the landfill, or the transfer sites, open seven days instead of six or five days, I was definitely in favor of spending the extra dollars to keep that service open all the time, as it's used by all community members in some fashion.
Mr. Cooper?
Thanks, I was, and Mr. Roberts filled in some of the details. I think the other piece that's worth filling in is that this affects the tipping fee rate, so it's, that's the number that gets adjusted. It goes up by four dollars versus two dollars. Two dollars if we found the efficiencies, four dollars if we leave the budget as now. And then my second question is, I didn't know if the administration wanted to give a nutshell description of this particular proposal, or if, I think, if we have enough, we'll have enough understanding, I thought it might be helpful for the public to hear the administration's perspective on this.
Well, there's cost savings created, and that, yes, the tipping fee, if this was to pass, we'd have to adjust the tipping fee down a couple dollars, which we can do. So there's a cost savings there on this. It's, it is only a half million dollars in savings. It makes the landfill more efficient and saves us money there, and it saves us a little bit of money at transfer sites. It would close them on Sundays, and Monday during the day, they'd be open Monday evening if this went through. So you're losing a day and a half of transfer site usage. Sunday is by far the slowest day, which is why staff picked that as the day to be closed. And it's a modest savings. It's a half million dollars, but we were looking for savings everywhere, and it's, I guess, more of a savings than we just added on Mary Si, Pacer Mary Si.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I'm glad to see Mr. Jordan here. My recollection is, is that more than four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is gonna be saved with this proposal, and I may be wrong, but we're talking about the solid waste disposal division saving four hundred and sixty-five thou, or, yeah, sorry, four hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. But does that, if nothing else, there's less, there's savings in, at the, well, at the landfill, if we're gonna only operate the landfill five days a week, that means that the cover will only have to be applied five instead of seven times a week, right? Which saves space in the landfill. So that adds life to the particular sale of that landfill, which is fairly expensive to develop. So, I mean, and that savings isn't reflected in this four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar savings in the budget, is it?
That's correct. It's not reflected.
My understanding is, is that you, as, you know, as the, not a director, but you know, as the head guy for the landfill, you have to, at this point, man, you know, hire people to work seven days a week, right? And obviously, given the wage and hour laws, it's not in the interest of this borough to have people work more than five days at eight hours a day. Otherwise, we're paying overtime, right?
We have staff currently that is on a, each member has different work schedules, so they still work a five-day schedule with two days off in a general sense, but those staffing are spread out over the seven days.
Does that staffing over seven days mean that you have more temporaries, more turnover? And otherwise, what?
That's correct. In order for us to have a seven-day schedule in the summertime, which is more of a busier time of year, we hire additional help, not only laborers, as well as equipment operators. And it also, in order for us to have a seven-day schedule, we need a halftime, need a halftime workstation attendant, which is a permanent position currently, but with this cost-saving proposal, that would be eliminated. In addition, we would be eliminating one full-time equipment operator as well.
All right, well, I'm gonna speak in favor of this amendment. I'm a resident of the city. I, my garbage is picked up one day a week, you know, if I don't get it out in front of my house Monday morning or Sunday night, then I get to go into it for another week. I really think that the people in this community are more capable than the five members who voted against this idea, more capable of adjusting their schedules and their lives to not dumping garbage, being able to dump garbage every day of the week. I think, I think they can adjust and adapt to not having the transfer sites being available on Sundays and Mondays, you know, presumably till four or five. It's, all the examples we heard about people dumping their trash at the gate when it was shut was only because they did not have a warning that the schedule was not, that it would not be open at that time. If people know ahead of time that the transfer sites are not gonna be open, such as what's happening now with the summer schedule, Mr. Jordan, do they have, are you seeing a lot of people dump garbage at the gate, you know, when, you know, between seven PM and seven AM?
In terms of the number of the overall people that use the transfer sites, the number that's actually leaving some debris in front of the bins or in front of the gates is pretty small. I don't have an exact number. We do, we have, we are getting a few smaller piles, you know, at various sites.
Okay, and I'm guessing based upon, well, from last year, did that problem go away after people got used to the hours?
Last year, we had less issues with people putting in their garbage or leaving their garbage in front of the gates, but this year, we have more sites under the attendant services, so you sort of anticipate a few more occurrences. I would hope and think with time that that would decrease. I know there was a Las Vegas trooper on one instance, he actually left me a message. He identified who had left the debris, called him, and gave him a choice, please come back and pick up your debris, or you'd have to edition a citation, person just elected to come back and pick up their debris. Just disappointing, you know, someone throws your trash on the ground in front of a public facility.
Yeah, all right, well, yeah, I just, I speak in favor of this amendment. I think, I think, I think resort changing the people in this community, thinking that they have to have access to transfer sites seven days a week, I think they can adjust a fewer, and it's saving us half a million dollars, at least. So, you know, I speak in favor.
Mr. Gray, thank you for waiting patiently. Over to you.
Not a problem. So I agree a lot with what Mr. Cooper said. I mostly seconded this amendment because we discussed it a lot in Finance Committee, obviously, but I wanted the public to be able to hear a little bit more the members' perspective and also the administration's perspective. And, you know, I feel like the public is very pretty mad at us for the whole seven-to-seven rash issue. I'm not sure that my perspective has changed on this specific one about putting it down to five days or leaving it at seven, but it's interesting to be in the position of the public being mad at you for not providing enough service versus something where you're trying to provide cost savings and then you get somebody mad at you anyway. So that's a tough position to be in, but I just wanted to, I don't think I've changed my perspective per se. I think this is a service that people are used to. I think it's something that's essential. I don't know that, again, I don't know that I've changed my perspective, but I've been kind of torn on this. So glad to discuss it again.
Thank you, and I'm gonna pass the gavel, because I too appreciate you bringing this forward, Mr. Quist. I feel that this was inappropriate to do in a budget session. I feel that we should have an ordinance, the public should know that we're proposing closing the sites two days a week. We should have a discussion, we should listen to it. I've heard people say yes and no, as I've wandered around saying, "Well, what do you think about this?" So I, and I also have been told of some cost savings that we can find by using the coal ash, that the various utilities are working to rid themselves of. They say that it's a very good substitute for the gravel, so there's some other ways we can save some money that we should probably pursue. Thank you.
All right. Any other debate? Mr. Quist?
Thank you. So, one reason that I think that this is a good place to look, and the argument that was made, this is a reason not to touch it, is that everybody uses this. I mean, we're at a place where we need to be, like, everybody needs to be sharing in the cost of government, everybody needs to be sharing in the reduction of service. And I think that this is an appropriate measure. And like I said, the idea, I don't necessarily expect the outcome to change based on how things went in Finance Committee, but I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment that probably should have included in the initial, which is also on page seven hundred and sixty-six, to adjust the tipping fee rate from one hundred and eleven dollars a ton to one hundred and nine, and then all the fees that roll down off of that as well, from the four-dollar increase to the two-dollar increase. And, you know, I think that these, budgetarily, these two concepts are really linked, so that's my, I'll think of amendment.
Okay, we have a second to amend the amendment to also provide that the user fees or the tipping fees will be decreased if this amendment passes. Discussion. All right, Mr. Gray, I know you have something to say, but I think unless it addresses this amendment to the amendment, I'm gonna call for a vote on the amendment to the amendment.
That's fine.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
Nine, zero.
All right, all right, well then, back to the amendment as amended. Mr. Gray, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, just something I forgot to bring up before. We were talking about, you know, the worry of piled the trash outside the transfer station. I happened to see somebody that I know well today say that they tried to go to the extra transfer site this morning, and it was after seven, and the gate was still locked, and there was a pile of garbage and brush in front of the gate. So I just, I hope that if we've made these changes to the hours, that we're at least gonna be diligent about and considerate about people's time, that they can expect to go there during those hours and get in and dump their trash, because this person actually had to drive to a different transfer site.
All right, here's not.
And Mr. Tackey has his hand up. I just wanted to mention the other thing that we discovered when we discussed this last time, was that there were indeed many contracts that would need to be changed, that Ileson probably needs to renegotiate contracts, Fort Wainwright needs to renegotiate contracts, City needs to renegotiate contracts, and we need to renegotiate contracts. So I think this is not a simple, a simple thing. I urge you, voting no, and I encourage the administration to bring this back as an ordinance so we can fully discuss it appropriately. Thank you.
Mr. Tackey?
I obviously associate myself closely with those statements, strongly urging everyone to vote no. I don't think this has been fleshed out enough, especially like the same deal with the hours and affecting people without them knowing about it. I too have already driven by, when I was coming back from the Turtle Club, I noticed that the Farmers Loop one had trash outside of it as well. And so, I don't have like cost savings associated with all this, but I haven't heard, like, I didn't really ask, I guess I could ask Mr. Jordan right now, is there, given the fact that we generate the same amount of trash regardless of the number of days, is it already analyzed that you can handle the taking in of that amount of tonnage in a shorter window each day, and actually compacting it and filling it with the savings that you projected with eight-hour days for employees?
So the short answer is yes. I mean, I looked at the, from the staffing standpoint, would I have enough staffing members each day of those five days per week to handle the various areas that need to be covered, scale house, you know, front office, operators, technicians, and so forth? I think I've allowed for seven or seven and a half on an average basis each day of the week of operators. Also, I've looked at it from equipment standpoint, you know, can the various compactors, dodgers, are they the capacity to handle a larger amount of tonnage? And the answer is yes as well. There's a range for each compactor, there's a cat handbook that you can look at that will tell you what it can handle, and we're well within that range. Things like, you know, contracts, gravel usage, things like that, that can be adjusted as needed, so. What is that, address your question.
Yeah.
Ms. Major?
So I just wanna say that I'm torn on this one, because I really recognize and see the value in both arguments. One, you know, it's almost five hundred thousand dollars in cost savings, and I agree that if we make these changes, people would change their behavior. I mean, it's very common in other cities that places where you want to get, you know, get rid of your trash or other items are not, they're not open seven days a week, so I get that. But I also agree with Ms. Dodge that, you know, this probably deserves a little bit more open process with public input, and truly recognizing the impact of those who use the facilities, particularly our businesses. So I'm really not, I'm still a little undecided on how I'm going to vote on this one, because I think there's very valid arguments on both sides.
Mr. Roberts?
I would say that if, this is but for an ordinance, that we also want to talk to the city about exactly what their arrangements are and what they can do within their agreements and what's possible for them. It seemed like there were kind of assumptions made on that part, and I think we really need to know is they're pretty effective, but also the other large users, there was a whole list given to us in the Finance Committee, I appreciate that, and we need to make sure that everyone's able to handle that kind of a shift.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Logeski?
I'm just kinda reiterating, reiterating a couple of comments from last time, this is more, I guess, for the public and for mine myself, but we can save a half million dollars on this, but don't think that frees up a half million dollars for Mary Siya or whatever else in the budget. It's its own special color of money, so those savings will filter down to us individually in various different pieces, but it'll basically add a half million dollars to the, you know, to our pockets one way or another, if you chase the money. And I'm not exactly sure how it filters down, I don't know if the attorney could help me within the city, so if they have a lower tipping rate, how does that filter down into people's pockets? I know for the borough residents, it'll go into eventually lower tax rates theoretically.
I don't know, other than to say the city charges a fee for garbage collection, so I assume they would adjust their fee accordingly, but I.
So the fee potentially might not go up as much as otherwise would have, or go down, whatever the case is.
Correct. That would be my assumption, but I don't know.
So, anyway, I'll be voting the same way I was in the Finance Committee. To me, it's no big deal whatsoever to lose two days. I do also echo some of the statements of some of the other members, where I haven't heard from the public on it, though. I certainly could be swayed if a whole bunch of the community came out and said, "All
I don't know, other than to say the city charges a fee for garbage collection, so I assume they would adjust their fee accordingly, but I-
So the fee potentially might not go up as much as otherwise would have or go down, whatever the case is.
Correct. That would be my assumption, but I don't know.
So, anyway, I'll be voting the same way I was in the Finance Committee. To me, it's no big deal whatsoever to lose two days. I do also echo some of the statements of some of the other members where I haven't heard from the public on it though. I certainly could be swayed if a whole bunch of the community came out and said, "All right, did I, I want you to interrupt me, it looks like you have-"
The public has had no information that this was something to comment on because it came on a Saturday afternoon at 3:00 in a budget. That's my whole point.
Yep, so I agree with that and I'd like to hear from the public, but I'm still voting yes, so that's me.
All right. Further comment, debate, questions? Mr. Roberts.
I'd like to ask Finance a question, which I don't know if you can pull it off the top of your head, but can you recollect when the last time was that we didn't raise the transfer collection enterprise fund, I can't remember the exact name of it, the one that pays the tipping fees for the borough residents? It seems like we always go to the max and we're saving up to eventually redo the transfer sites, so have we ever, since I've been here, it seems like we've always maxed it. Have we ever not maxed it in recent years or?
I'm going to partly defer to Peggy. In the years that I've been in this position, which is since 2013, we have, we've always taken it to the cap. I don't know if Peggy knows beyond that.
I might have to defer to Bob, but I recollect that we've always gone to the cap with the solid waste collection district.
So, my point would be then for the public is that the city residents would get an offset in an increase of their trash fees. In other words, it wouldn't be raised quite as soon because they had lower tipping fees applied to them this year, and so they might not raise their tipping fee, their trash collection fee for the residences as soon. You know, they might be able to extend out how far they can go, go an extra year without raising those fees. But the borough residents, if we keep taking the solid waste collection district to the max, all it means is that we're just going to accumulate a little bit less money in the transfer site collection fund, the fund that the transfer sites are based out of, but that's not going to go to anyone's pocket directly, it just means in the future we'll have a little bit less money and have to put off when we use that money. That's all it means. And then there's some other very large commercial or governmental agencies that use it that might have some other impacts because of those different fees.
All right. Further debate. Mr. Gray? Anything more?
No, under, thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote on this amendment. Madam Clerk.
As amended, Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lujewski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
No.
And Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. Hey, does anyone want to change their vote?
Five, four?
Yes.
Yes.
Major wants to change her vote.
Ms. Major.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Major?
Yes, I want to change my vote to no.
All right. Any other, any other changes in vote? All right. Next one.
Okay, it's like four, five.
All right. The amendment, as amended, fails. Hand back to Abbott.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we're still good. Do you want to take a break or do you want to move on? I don't see anybody rushing for the doors, so, Mr. Cooper.
I'm going to offer an amendment that I promised I would earlier back in the Finance Committee, so I'm going to move to amend, and you have a copy in your packet, in the Department of Community Planning, Division of Administration, page 168, line number 27, to increase the training budget for Community Planning Department, Administration Division by $15,000. Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Lujewski to increase community planning by $15,000 on line 27, training increase. Ms. Cooper, on the motion.
Sure. So, this year, as part of the budget process, each of the departments had kind of a list of things that they would really like to have if they could. Community planning fell very early in the process and at that point, I think we were being a little more careful in terms of our funding, not that being careful is a bad thing, but I think at the end of the day, all community planning had asked for was some additional training and we had not funded that, so I was bringing this budget amendment forward now to give them some additional training dollars.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Cooper, do you know specifically what kind of training or?
You know, I don't recollect, I remember it had to do with some of the Planning Commission members, I don't know if the administration can remind us on what some of the specific trainings were, but-
Right, so the training requested by the Community Planning Department was for just general professional development for staff and commissioners.
All right, well, I support this amendment and I will be voting for it.
Anyone else on this amendment? Seeing none, Clerk, looks like we're ready.
Mr. Lujewski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? Six, three? It's adopted, six, three. Mr. Tackey.
I'm going to move to amend line 41 on page 551.
Is this another one?
Yeah, it's a Public Works Solid Waste Collection District attendance.
Oh.
We're moving it.
Is there, do you have one of these or is it a different?
It's on the cuff.
Pardon me?
That was off the cuff.
Okay, so tell us again, please.
Page 551, Public Works Solid Waste Collection District, line 41.
Hold on, let's all get to 551.
Second.
So 551, line 41. You wanted to amend it to?
Zero.
Zero?
Previously attempted to before and then we amended it to 200 in the Finance.
All right, okay. And it was seconded by Ms. Lujewski? So, the proposal is that on page 551, item P, it would be zeroed from, I think it's sitting at 200,000 right now and you would zero that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to speak to that?
Absolutely, yeah. I think after talking to several constituents and people that have come and attended and gone to these transfer sites and used them, they feel that seeing an attendant just pretty much standing there, kind of like being a deterrent, is like putting money in a fireplace, that's what they basically have told me. And I feel that limiting the hours to 12 hours a day and the cost of cleaning up for a few errant things is not as expensive as $200,000 for having someone be there for 12 hours a day. And if we're going to like limit the hours, I'm wondering if that's the case because it's only through October 31st is all that we're paying for attendance for. So are we going to like open it back up to being 24 hours a day then after that? So come November, will we always have that available then? And so, we're flipping and flopping on our constituents and we're limiting the hours in the summertime of all the places to limit hours at, seems a little, not a good idea, basically. So, that's kind of my position and I feel that we should just leave it wide open.
Okay. Mr. Roberts.
So, it's funny actually, when the announcement came out that the tenant service had started, I guess I got a little upset because I thought, well, I thought we voted against that, but I got confused with the prior amendment in that we didn't want it closing extra days. We hadn't really talked about hours and so I realized that because I was trying to get an amendment prepared and realized, oh, we really talked about days, we didn't talk about hours and the Assembly pretty much approved this money. I don't like the idea of cutting the hours down and I agree, just having attendants standing around, just watching things, isn't really an effective use of labor and maybe something different could be looked at, but I don't think we need to spend the money for it and I really would like the hours, especially in the summer, extended. So, I'll be voting for this amendment.
Mr. Lawrence and then Mr. Cooper.
Well, it's, okay, as I understand it, then this amendment would eliminate all attendance at all transfer sites?
That's my intention.
FY19.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, I speak against the amendment. Hey, Mr. Jordan can confirm that my recollection is, is that there are savings associated with that attendant being there. And I think we have to be a little more realistic here. We've got some bad behavior going on at transfer sites. We have dumpster divers who go in and pull out garbage, they cut open bags, they leave it there, we've got, we've got city people who don't know better utilizing transfer sites when they don't pay for them. And, you know, it's my impression, and Mr. Jordan, I'm going to ask you to respond to this, is that there's significant savings having an attendant there. Otherwise, we have to pay the contractor a lot more money to clean up around the dumpsters and that, you know, in a sense, this amendment isn't going to save us money, it's probably just going to make us pay more to the contractors who have to clean up. Mr. Jordan, I mean, are there savings associated with having a tenant there?
Yes, there are, if the attendant can be effective and do the various studies that we've asked them to do. The big numbers or the big savings comes from ensuring that only the legitimate users of the transfer sites are actually using the transfer sites. Mr. Lawrence, you mentioned commercial use, that's a large number, it's been estimated about 10% of the waste stream, as well as the City Fairbanks residents, which has been estimated about 3% of the waste stream that is being brought to the transfer sites. That in itself is a large number and I don't have it in front of me right here. The other savings comes from the lack or the almost complete elimination of junk vehicles that are left at transfer sites over the course of last summer when we were doing the trial periods. I think I'm safe to say we had none, as opposed to it, before we had quite a few more. The mess that's often caused or done at night and then left for the contractor to clean up goes away completely, okay. Yes, there's a little bit left in front of the gates at times, but nothing compared to what's out in the site itself, not only next to the dumpster, but 20 and 30 and 40 feet out. I've shown you pictures, I've provided photos and I continue to get those, you know, prior to restarting the tenants this spring. It would save on, the hauling contract has a cleanup requirement, it's the incidental stuff that falls out of the container, whatever, to clean it up. This just gets far beyond that, I mean, it's everywhere. It's the graffiti on the bins on the containers. I went back and looked, we repainted all the bins at a number of sites last summer and then I looked later at those that had received the tenant service and those that had not received the tenant service, big difference. Chino pump, I think literally every dumpster needs to get repainted, it's 60 bucks a pop just to do that. We had times prior to these tenant services that the contractor would repaint a bin, get the graffiti off and come back the next morning and have to do it again. So, 60 bucks each time it's happening. So, the tenant service has been in place for a week, it's a new contract, it's a major step up from what we were doing last summer. Last summer was three sites, we phased it in over the course of the summertime, this year we did it at seven, sort of all at once. There's some kinks, there's some problems we're working through, I'm constantly, you know, in contact with the contractor, but I remind myself, some of the problems are coming up as things we can work through. I've got seven, the contractor has seven new employees at these sites. Some of them are walking out there for the first time and it is quite a daunting task to handle, having been out there myself last summer. If you want to remember how a site that was run well with an attendant service, it would be back last June when I had one of my employees out there, she was good. And if any of you have actually ran into her out there, she did a very good job. She was busy and she was very tired at the end of the day. The attendants from the security services this year, they'll get there, okay? I mean, there's a few stories I've heard that are not what I want to hear, they're not meeting the contract requirements, but overall they are. I was mentioning Esther Transfer Site, yes, it had garbage in front this morning, I was notified by the contractor shortly after seven, but I was told as the attendant pulled the debris out of the way and got that site open. So if it wasn't open at seven, it was open shortly after. That wasn't the fault of the attendant, it was just a matter of getting the debris out of the way.
So, is your question being answered?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you want to speak on this topic or you can wait? Okay. Mr. Cooper is next, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Well, I strongly oppose this amendment. I think that contrary to the constituents, Mr. Tackey has heard from the overwhelming number of constituents I have heard from has said it's some of the most positive things that the borough has done in terms of solid waste transfer site service in a number of years. Over the course of the winter, I took pictures of some of the absolutely disgusting status of the transfer sites that we didn't have last summer when people were there monitoring the sites. I mean, it was bad enough going in on my way to work at the Farmers Loop West Transfer Site that I stopped to actually take pictures. And that was a stark contrast to what it looked like during the summer when we did have the attendance. And, you know, I used the two probably busiest transfer sites at both ends of Farmers Loop on a multi, you know, several times a week, I was going to say multi-week basis, but it's every week, several times a week. And, you know, I had to adjust again, I was going to take my trash to the transfer site and it was 7:30, I said, oh, you know, but I made the adjustment, I got through the next day. And it was a breath of fresh air to drive into that place and not have it filthy with piles of junk just lying around everywhere without, you know, with having attendants. When I was there, we were actually stopping to talk to people, so I guess they were doing good when I happened to be there. Appreciate the new signage that was up, I think that this is, you know, I wish there was a way that we could do it during the winter too, let me put it that. So I strongly oppose this proposed amendment to zero out the funding for attendance.
Mr. Tackey and then Mr. Mayor and then Mr. Roberts.
So then, I guess my question for Mr. Jordan, so after October 31st, it goes back to being a 24-hour service in the middle of winter?
At this point, there's no definite decision's been made, but at this point, because the current contract would end, yes. But that could be a question we can ask the Assembly for guidance on that in the future.
If we did want it, then theoretically, the idea is to hopefully have it seven to seven and there always being a tenant year round, then eventually, if this is the direction.
I would say realistically, it's probably more likely we would ask for tenant services just in the summer months. I just can't quite figure out how I could have an attendant out there in the middle of January. It'd be a little bit cold and difficult and dark. I think it's probably more of a seasonal type of-
How much is a car removal? What's the cost to remove a car?
anywhere from 40 to about 60 bucks, depending on the transfer site.
How many have you had, before we ever did the attendance, was the number of cars that we had to remove from transfer sites in a year?
I might have that, you have to just give me a moment. So, fiscal year 16, so I'll go back a year before we started the tenant services, from the transfer sites we had 74.
Okay.
Then fiscal year 17, and yes, there was approximately a month where we had tenant services at one site, Farmers Loop East, we had 143.
Okay. We've got less than $10,000 a year in terms of cars, but we're willing to spend $200,000 a year, which the original number was 312. Let me remind the Assembly that the assumptions of what our cost savings were happen to match up exactly with what our attendance would have cost. So, it makes me suspect on what the actual cost savings will be achieved from having attendance there. Would the number of, the percentage that we would be saving have tweaked had you put in $200,000 after we did that to just be a $200,000 savings in which we would still be awash just to have the attendance here? Because these are all theoretical assumptions and our biggest savings are actually the idea that, oh yeah, residents are going to like totally be honest with these attendants and not just city residents, I mean, when I say that, or commercial people that are operating vehicles that look like they came from a residence rather than from a commercial facility. The assumptions there, I think, are overly stated and I think the savings aren't going to be as drastic as we might think they're going to be. And I think that the actual cost that you had mentioned, I figured, these $60 a car, 175 cars is $10,000. I mean, that's not even close to being 200 grand to pay for an attendant. And also, on top of that, the other thing was like painting dumpsters, you know, 60 bucks a pop, you mentioned if we had to do 30 of them a week, every week, that we're looking at, you know, 90 grand or something. So I think that the cost of the attendance is more costly to our community than the savings that we say that we're going to be getting. I think it's, and we're also limiting services in the summer months of all times, when like someone, if they are expecting to come there at 7:00 in the morning and then things closed and they're not able to get in, like what are you going to do? It's like if I drove my pickup and I'm going into town, yeah, they went to another transfer site, which obviously isn't the best thing to do because you're now imposing another community's burden for their transfer site, but I think a lot of people are going to leave their trash in their pickups, they're in the back. And what likes trash more than anything is ravens and parking lots. I think it's going to make our community more dirty than just letting them put it in a specific spot during 24 hours of summer, because I know I work at 10, 11 o'clock at night mowing my lawn and I have to go and drop it off.
And Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Lujewski.
So, I'd like to ask Mr. Jordan, does the, I don't want to call it revenue, but does the offset to the cleaning costs that we should be experiencing because contractors aren't cleaning, is that, and maybe even the dumpster painting, is that reflected in the budget under some contractual services line that's been decreased because it went along with this line to hire attendants? So have we seen the corresponding offset on the measurable, quantifiable savings that you're talking about? Because we can measure that. We know how much we paid them to clean up extra trash last year beyond their contract and we know how many dumpsters got painted. So if you, if you did it a bunch last year, you're able to get numbers for those three sites, extrapolate them to seven proportionally in some way and come up with an offset number, did we lower contractual line?
I want to say no, but I'm going to ask if I can explain that. You're asking about painting of dumpsters or the number of junk vehicles, told, there's a savings that are, is it the big savings? No. We've mentioned that it's the contractor savings, it's the big savings and a smaller portion of that is the City Fairbanks users. That's where the big savings come from, that more than offsets the cost of the attendance. There was a question about why there was the higher number in there originally. If you go back to January when I'm preparing the budget, the best numbers I had was what we had paid last summer, which was around 78, 80,000 for, you know, to have attendants at the transfer sites. The budget was put forth, then the actual bids came in, they came in lower at 48,000, the Assembly was aware of that at the bid award time and that was brought up in April and the dollar amount was adjusted down. So as it sits right now, is there's enough funding at the current rate, at the current actual prices of the contractor. So I want to clarify that, I didn't inflate it, I didn't mislead it, that's the numbers I had, okay? The other things that we're forgetting here is the comments regarding the safety and the comfort of the users that go to these sites. And that's a big factor as well and the positive comments that I've been hearing and the others I've been hearing.
Sure, so, I'm going to address that.
Let me stay with responding to what the Assembly's asking you.
I think I will address it then.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, I want to bring up two points. One is, if the big money that we're savings, the big savings we think we're getting is the non-quantifiable savings of stopping contractors into a small amount, city residents from coming, I think you could achieve the same purpose for those two things of having an itinerant, I'll call them that, attendant who drives around between sites and catches people unexpectedly. And so, they're taking a risk and businessmen don't necessarily like to take risks and so, they know there's going to be people going and they could go to all the sites, but, I'm not saying they need to, but the point is that's a method that costs a lot less money to achieve the same type of results if that's where our big money savings are. So from an enforcement perspective, I also wonder if we really have to paint the dumpsters that much. I mean, if it's offensive graffiti, yeah, we should paint the dumpsters, if it's just a big heart and a couple names, I don't know if it's that important and maybe we ought to, maybe just think about not painting so many dumpsters. But, as you said, that's a small amount of money. And then the last thing I want to point is that, I agree, there are people on both sides. There are people who want to be able to go dump the trash at any time, day or night and they don't want the hours and that's the big argument against it, and people who don't like to necessarily see people standing around at the dumpster sites. And then there's people who really like the fact that it's nice and clean and it's a nicer sight and I'll take Mr. Cooper's word for it, I live in the city, so I only go there when I'm taking my parents' trash out there, so I don't get there all that often anymore, but I certainly in the past have used it a lot. But maybe what we ought to do, if we're not sure really of the overall population's attitude on what they really want, is maybe we ought to put it back to a vote at some point in time and say, how do you want your trash service? And get them to vote on it. And get them to come out and say, yes, we're okay with five days, yes, we're okay with attendance and put an actual dollar figure in that so they know what they're voting for. And maybe we ought to look at doing that if this is really such a good idea and have the people approve that level of service and then everyone will know that this is what they're going to get and they'll know why it happened. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lujewski and then Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I've been thinking about those cars and it'd be interesting if, and I forget how many was it, like 100 a year, 150? 174? I'm just wondering if even one of those per year gets abandoned in the public right away, what that savings calculation is going to end up being. So, anyway, I'm going to vote the same way I voted in the Finance Committee on this and that's all.
Mr. Lawrence.
Just wanted to respond to Mr. Roberts' idea that we use a roaming attendant and that would be as effective. You know, I would remind the Assembly, I don't know how many transfer sites we have, 12 or 15? 12 or 15?
14, 15.
14, spread over the size of the state of New Jersey. So I would submit that one roaming attendant isn't going to create any kind of concern to somebody who wants to illegally use, you know, or dump at the transfer site when they're not allowed to. There's just, you know, the chances of getting caught is minimal.
Mr. Tackey.
I just wanted to say, I do, like, as previously mentioned by Mr. Cooper, I do appreciate the signs that are there, they're very prevalent. That's a huge improvement. I think that that also will deter some residents and some commercial users who just are under the impression already that they get that. And just to clarify, Mr. Jordan, I wasn't saying that you were intentionally inflating that number. I'm saying that you were just intentionally inflating the cost savings assumptions associated with the number that you had in line because it made it wash perfectly as well. Thanks.
Mr. Roberts.
So to Mr. Lawrence's point, that's valid, but I wasn't necessarily thinking we had to send the tenant to all, say, 14 sites. Right now, we're only having attendants at seven, so they can still go to those outlying sites if they really want to, if we're talking enforcement here. But having one just go to the seven sites that are much closer to town probably wouldn't be as big a deal and could probably keep them busy all day going between the sites and hitting them two, three times. They wouldn't do the same level of work, whatever that work is that they do out there. I don't know what extra work they're having them done, but they could at least, for the, what we consider the big savings, the enforcement part, that kind of surprise enforcement, if people know about it, you know? People, a lot of people, they may not all follow the speed limit, but they keep it reasonable enough because they know there's some enforcement out there. It doesn't have to be on every corner.
Mr. Quist, and then Mr. Lajewski.
Do you? Mr. Jordan, a minute ago, Mr. Tackey said that the projected cost savings from having attendant services was inflated, and I was wondering, could you speak to that? I mean, and I can, I could sound out of question if you like, but he probably said it.
Okay, sorry. The recommended budget had $312,000 or something in there for attendant services. And that's what I put in initially back in January, February issue when the budget was prepared. Based a little bit upon what it would cost, based upon the cost that I knew about from last summer, okay? And then the actual bid went out, I got the actual numbers, and that ended up being lower. And that amendment, the $200,000 now, ties exactly to the actual bid amount.
So if I may clarify here, so, no, I think that we understand that, but the, and I don't, Mr. Tackey will tell me if I'm mischaracterizing his remarks, but what I'm hearing is that he's suspicious of the projected cost savings, about how the projected cost savings quite neatly match up with the initial projected cost of attendant services. And the implication, or maybe it wasn't implication, maybe it was explicit, was that that projected cost savings figure that is inflated. Am I making sense? Or I could try a third way to ask it. I'm not, so, okay. We're initially in this proposed budget, it looked like there's about $300,000 of potential savings to, to the borough if we hired collection services. And that collection services was going to cost us about $300,000, and it was going to be a wash. And, and that savings end of it, that $300,000-ish figure, do you, I'm hearing from Mr. Tackey, that number's inflated, and I'm curious from you, like, how did you come to that number? Do you feel that that's still a, you know, accurate approximation? And if I may, Mr. Tackey, am I expressing your view fairly?
Yeah, I might have accidentally explicitly characterized it as an inflated cost savings or something. I just am questioning all the assumed savings that we would get. I don't know.
It seemed more like a constructed cost argument.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying to think of how to say this, and I even, there's a lot here. So I, there's estimates in line 39 and line 40, there's a lot of, there's estimates, okay? Everything from what the tonnage is going to be for this year through the end of June, there's estimates for next year, and what percentage increase it's going to be. It's the best estimate I have, okay? Using often some historical increases from year to year. There, there's an estimate of where that tonnage is going to come from, from what site, from what area, because each area has a different price. That's why I use a weighted average. There is an estimate of what other costs I'm going to have to pay. So you're hearing the word estimate quite a bit. In terms of the savings from the attendants, again, that's an estimate as well. I remember exactly how I came up with the 2,100 tons, and I, sorry, I can't off the top of my head tell you that right now, but it's.
Clearly, you did your best to work through, based on what assumptions you had and numbers you had, and came up with the best figure you could, based on that information. Mr. Quist, and then Mr. Roberts.
So, so let's say, you know, this is just, you know, it's an estimate, but it's, you know, a good faith, best attempt estimate. And let's say it's intentionally inflated by twice. So let's say, like, it's not actually $300,000 savings, let's say it's only $150,000 savings. Then these attendant services, if that were the case, and obviously this is just kind of a thought experiment here, if that were the case, then the attendant services would have a net cost of about $50,000. And so under such a situation, I would still say that that's still a value, that we're increasing the quality of service significantly, and it costs $50,000. Now, I would think that's kind of a worst-case scenario. I'm guessing Mr. Jordan, who's very diligent, isn't off by, you know, by such a large margin. So I mean, based on that, I would speak against the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, I think I wasn't sure, I had you have it.
I was just going to just say that, alls we're saying is that the estimates you used happen to exactly line up with the costs, and that's just strange. But we understand that it's because, as you've mentioned, we can't know how many people get stopped. There's no way to know that, so you have to just pick a number out of thin air. And the point we're making is that the number was out of thin air because there's no possible way of knowing how much you're stopping by having the attendants there. But I think we all agree, you're probably stopping some, and that's why I gave what I thought was the solution. But, so we're not saying anything about how you do the numbers, except that nobody could have done it any better, because that's just the way those kind of numbers work, because there's no big basis for it.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Mayor, on this topic, or are you on the list?
I'm all on this topic. So, Mr. Jordan, you estimated reductions in tonnage and such on lines 39 and 40, and the cost of the attendance on line 41 is a separate calculation. So do you still stand by, if we had attendants, that we would have those savings? And the cost of the attendance is irrelevant to what the savings would be, is my point here. So are you sticking by your tonnage reduction estimates on 39 and 40?
On the 2,100 tons?
Yes.
That was my estimate a few months ago, it would be still my estimate now.
Okay. And yes, I, I do take exception to the characterization that these numbers were pulled out of thin air. They are based on the best information that Mr. Jordan has available. And the expectation is we would still have these savings, and it would result then in a significant savings at the $200,000 rate to create over $300,000 in savings. So it's a net gain in the budget.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Lajewski, and then Mr. Cooper.
So I'm looking through the numbers here, I'm not seeing what I'm looking for, and I know you can help me. What's the savings as a result of reduction of commercial tonnage? For the estimated savings? With the attendants?
The commercial tonnage is included in that 2,100 tons. So it's the diversion of the waste stream that shouldn't be going to the transfer site.
Okay, so the 2,100 tons is a little under $80,000 bucks, right? $79,485?
That's the hauling fee component. There's also a tipping fee component.
Okay, which is?
In line 40, and it's $233,000.
Okay.
The simple way to think about it is for every ton of debris that doesn't go to the transfer site, that shouldn't be going there, saves the collection district approximately 38 bucks a ton, because they don't have to haul it. This means the taxpayers don't have to pay for that, as well as the collection district doesn't have to pay the tipping fee, whether it's 107 or 109 or 111, whatever number it ends up being. So it's approximately about $144, $145 per ton total.
Yeah, right, and you're saying the city estimated percentage of the current tonnage is 3%, the commercial is 10%?
That's the number that I've used as a projection.
For the commercial, it's roughly three times the amount of the city, so that's, you know, like, three quarters, a little bit more than that sounds like, based off of your estimates of this problem. So what I'm getting at, I'm just trying to think creatively here, and I don't recall the specific privacy issues of installing cameras. And I know that there was a recording problem with public records, but I am wondering, what if we had live streaming cams with no record? They just streamed either to the internet, because public streaming is a way to determine deter bad behavior, or just to a private website for the one potential roaming, you know, attendant who can have real-time information? Because it looks like the low-hanging fruit is this commercial tonnage. If you can deter that, you're going to get most of the savings here. It's not so much the City of Fairbanks tonnage and the abandoned cars and the repainting of the cans, it's.
I don't think I'm going to tackle the live streaming question. I don't think that's mine. I don't know if anybody else does.
So we can, I mean, from a legal perspective, we do have surveillance on some buildings for purposes of crime detection. It's typically recorded. We only go into those recordings if there's an incident. There, I believe, was discussions in the past about transfer sites and a general feeling that there could be vandalism and other things that wouldn't really make that investment worth it. Mr. Cooper.
Two points. One, we talked a little bit about assumptions, which is something I wanted to hit on and note, that, you know, Mr. Jordan is the expert on this, he works in this field day in and day out, and so I don't think that my assumptions about usage and tonnage are any better grounded than Mr. Jordan's. I think that Mr. Jordan's making the best assumptions he can, based on the data that he works with to know about the usage. So I don't think this debate is really about, you know, that, it's about the hours, whether or not we think it should be open 24 hours or not. And second, off of Mr. Quist's point, I think that even if the savings were a wash, it's still a good deal. I mean, that's, I guess, where we come out, right, is that it's a wash. Even if we're not saving $100,000, even if, you know, the savings amount to the cost of having attendants and it's a wash, that is still added value to the citizens of the borough. So just want to leave you with those two thoughts.
Okay. Any last comments? Yes, Mr. Quist?
Thank you. So I just would like to note that this amendment is not dissimilar to one that we just discussed in that it deals with an order of magnitude of money of some hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it affects the hours of service available to residents to use transfer sites. Yet, we seem to be pretty comfortable discussing it in this public meeting, whereas some members were uneasy discussing the last item in this setting. So I mean, they seem very similar to me. I just wanted to make that sort of procedural note.
Mr. Tackey.
And I just, like, I appreciate the clarification through Mr. Cooper. He actually pointed out that it's an effect on the hours, and I think that's a huge factor in this. And I think having more than just a 12-hour window is a huge thing in the middle of summer in Alaska. And having it be reliable 12 hours also, too, just noted by Mr. Gray, is also another major factor. And so I think that is also one of the underlying reasons that I would be striking this line, unless we wanted to increase it and make it be from 6:00 a.m. until 10:00 o'clock at night. But then we'd have to go and rebid that contract, I would assume, and it would cost a lot more. So do we want to spend more money to actually have the service and the savings also to be able to have the deter? Or do we want to limit the hours for our residents?
Mr. Roberts, and then Mr. Cooper.
I was just hoping that no one was thinking that I was uneasy about speaking of these things.
So noted. Mr. Cooper.
I guess this is, you know, Mr. Tackey raises a point seven to seven, right? I know one of the things we talked about with this experiment before is what hours are best, and I don't know, Mr. Jordan, where you're at with determining whether or not that can be shifted to different timeframes during the day, so that a couple days a week it's later, opens later and closes later, or if, I know that these are things that we've talked about before. And I don't necessarily have to give us an answer now, but for the benefit of Mr. Tackey's concern, I mean, these are all things that can be addressed with the funding that we have. What are, what are ways that we can shift this to make it more convenient for folks at different times of the week?
And I'm just thinking that it seems like it might be a really good idea to have an advisory board for the solid waste disposal district. I hate to suggest that, but it seems like while we're working this kind of, these really complicated nuanced issues with our public, it might be good to have a board that can, that you can work with and say, what, you know, how does this work and get some information? Mr. Tackey.
I was just going to say, rather than having an advisory board, I would agree with Mr. Roberts' comment earlier, put it to a vote of the citizens that are actually using these services. Every single resident uses it in some form or another. Let them decide, and then that's the will of the voters.
Okay. Any last, yes? No, he would let me know, he hasn't said anything. Any last? Oh, yes, Mr. Gray? Yes?
I find that I was good.
Okay, thank you. Okey-dokey. Are we ready to vote on the amendment which would zero out line 41, item P, attendant services at five main transfer sites, plus Esther and Fox, July 1 through October 31? Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 3-6?
It fails, 3-6.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Cooper, are you going to move for a break?
I was going to move a very short budget motion. I hope it'll be non-controversial, apart from a little debate. In the Department of Library Services, user fee schedule, ordinance attachment C, Roman at 2, appendix E, page 756, line numbers, non-borough resident user fee, the dollar amount is zero. I move to amend the user fee schedule for library services as follows. Change quote "non-borough resident user fee" to quote "non-FNSB resident library card, comma, non-ALC library member." Perenn must be Alaska resident.
Is there a second?
I'll second, so I can find out what he's talking about.
It's in one of our sheets, maybe.
That wasn't cryptic enough for you?
Yeah. Mr. Cooper has moved to make an amendment to change number of resident user fee to "non-Fairbanks-Norstarborough resident library card, comma, non-ALC library member." Must be Alaska resident, probably has to do with our new Alaska Library Catalog Consortium.
I'll read the reason stated on the budget motion.
Before you do that, I want to say thank you, Mr. Jordan, for coming up and helping us understand things. Thank you.
And I'm sure our library staff will tell us more, but the reason on the budget motion is the non-borough resident user fee needs to be clarified due to FNSB public libraries joining the Alaska Library Catalog Consortium. So maybe Ms. Harder can tell us more.
I hope. Yeah, it's simply to clarify, we've had in the past this non-borough user fee for a card, if somebody's not living in the borough, obviously, and they want to use our library, and they can get a card if they pay a certain amount of money. We just wanted to make sure that that was clear with the ALC users, because it's going to get complicated.
Official.
Yeah. Well, as you know, the Alaska Library Consortium has several libraries, but there's also some libraries, such as Delta, that are not in that consortium. So occasionally, we'll have somebody that travels up from Delta several times a year, and they want to have the borrowing privileges to borrow more than three items at a time or something. They can get a library card that says, for $40, that's the fee, so that they can borrow just like any other user that has a library card within the borough, the Fairbanks-Norstarborough. So what this is doing is just clarifying that if we left it, non-borough resident user fee, it would make it sound like we would have to charge people around the state that are part of that consortium that fee. So we're just trying to clarify so that we can still allow people that aren't part of the consortium but outside of the borough, if they wanted that service, they could get a library card.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, clerk, looks like we're ready to vote. Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
9-0.
It's adopted 9-0.
No one asked for a break yet.
Okay. We'll take a, is it a five-minute break? Anyone? Okay. Thank you, everybody. That was a fabulous five-minute break. We stuck to it pretty closely. We are reconvened, and does anyone else have any amendments they wish to propose? I don't see any. I'm just going to check with my friend, Mr. Gray, and see if he's raised his hand.
No, I have amendments.
No amendments? Okay, are we ready to vote? Mr. Roberts, and then Mr. Quist.
Okay, so now I'll make an amendment. That, so the amendment is that any amount in the budget that, in the amended budget that we've arrived at at this point, that's over the, the amount that would exceed last year's mil rate, would be taken from general fund and brought in. So the result would be, we would end up with a mil rate the same as last year.
Second for the second discussion.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Tackey, that any amount of the budget over the amount expended last year, essentially, it looks like it says amount exceeded last year, the mil rate, last year's mil rate, will be taken from general fund mil rate, so the mil rate will be flat.
Right, and so.
A little awkward writing, but yeah.
A little awkward speaking. So I just want to ask Finance to give us a number.
Okay. Finance, do you have a number for that?
I have to get.
And that was moved by Mr. Roberts, and second by Mr. Tackey. Right, was it, thank you.
And I need to wait for Peggy.
For the listening public, we're getting a figure at this time. Yes, Mr. Cooper?
And maybe I can ask Finance, I hope Ms. Peggy already has the answer, so.
Are we looking at a number?
Yes, please.
So, Mr. Roberts wants to know how the fund balance, if we keep the mil rate the same last year.
So the question is, how much would we be taking from general fund so that to maintain last year's mil rate?
And I'm speaking of the area-wide mil rate here.
Area-wide. And I would also ask for perhaps Ms. Dolan to let us know what that impact would be, or whomever would let us know what that impact would be on the tax cap? Make sure, to lower it?
No. So the tax cap's based on the maximum allowable revenue. I think what Mr. Roberts is trying to do is basically say the mil rate is going to be apples to apples, and if it's, if there's amounts over, the tax cap will balance it for the general fund.
I don't believe that's what he's saying. Is that what you're saying?
No.
That's how I understood it. Okay, so then.
Anything, we would only collect up to the mil rate.
The same mil rate as last year.
Right, so if that.
And any money left over after we've collected enough on the area-wide mil rate, any money extra than that that's in the budget would be supplied from general fund and not be taxed this next year.
Right.
Okay, so we're assuming the mil rate that is going to bring us under the cap?
That was my assumption.
Okay, is that right?
So what you want me to do is take from general fund fund balance, reduce the taxes to bring the tax mil rate down to what?
It was last year.
Or it was currently.
Yes. I'm only referring to the area-wide mil rate at this point.
Okay, so then, sorry, then I need to clarify, Ms. Dodge, the impact on the revenue cap will be for next year, because you'll be limited to the amount that you impose this year.
That's correct, thank you. That was my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless you choose to designate that as a tax, as a tax reduction, because there is a provision in the tax cap code that you can say that draw from fund balance does not affect the tax cap, but that has to be affirmative.
Yeah, that's true. Your point, Mr. Roberts.
Somebody else, we have that in front of us, they just passed that out, and somebody makes that motion every year.
I don't believe that's, okay. Is that, is, thank you.
I've got one.
Yeah, okay, so.
They handed it out.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, so were we waiting for a figure? Okay. Mayor, you had your hand raised, were you wanting to say something while we waited for a figure?
I wanted to clarify where Ms. Dolan went back and clarified, I was going to make the same comment, it does affect the tax cap, the way it currently is proposed.
Okay. Mr. Cooper had your name down, do you want to wait until after we get the figure, or?
I was just, it was going to be in addition to Mr. Roberts' question to Finance, which is how much with our current budget amendments, we are over our 19% target reserve.
Ms. Dodge, have a question on this.
Certain.
Clarification on this exact point?
Okay, that motion to be made of general fund point, okay.
So as it's written here, it says it's being done in order to reduce the amount of property taxes levied on the taxpayer. The attorney said a minute ago that if the, if it included, or Ms. Brady said a minute ago, if the motion included the statement that the intent was to reduce the property taxes, then it would not have an effect on the tax cap. But then I just read the mayor say that it would, and so I just want to, my question, I guess, is, is this statement here sufficient?
Yeah. It is. Yeah, so it's in 804, 280, has some notwithstanding language for the tax cap, for the tax revenue cap, excuse me, one of which is if you designate those amounts as a tax reduction from the general fund. So I think the language that you've been handed out is sufficient to do that, so.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
And it doesn't have to be simultaneous with this motion, because there may be other motions where they were drawing from the general fund that could all be included with that one.
Okay. Mr. Lajewski.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So the revenue tax cap can go up based off of a multiplier CPI base of the previous year's budget, or, sorry, revenue tax cap, basically. And so that's what this whole technicality is about, is whether the overall base before it's multiplied is going to be bigger or smaller by definition.
Correct. So it is not a limitation, after you do that calculation, amounts designated for purposes of taxpayer relief aren't counted for purposes of that cap.
Right, okay.
We're still waiting for a number, right? We're still waiting for a number, right? Okay. Okay, could you restate that, Jill? What, your last statement?
So the limitation, so your tax revenue cap limitation excludes amounts designated by the assembly to be used from fund balance in order to give taxpayer relief.
So that money is clearly still part of the calculation in the, in, for the next year? Like, just making sure I understand. That's what it seems, certainly the intent, it seems, okay.
I don't know what you mean by calculation, but yeah, I think we're saying the same thing.
Well, I'm going to clarify, these are estimates because we do not have certified assessed values yet, so things can go up and down and change. We would be taking $5,45,000 from fund balance to balance the budget and reducing the taxes by the like. We bring it to, right now I'm, I'm a little bit tiny over with the last years, but it's, I have to get down to playing with the numbers. Right now I've got it at 11.922, current year's 11.913, so it's tens of thousands of dollars I have to kind of play to get it to the exact, so it's a rough order.
And so where, and so where would that leave the general fund?
Twenty.
I don't know, we took.
So that would leave the general fund at about 20 million, so it would be under the target by about.
Does that include the Marysai motion?
The Marysai portion, we were taking from fund balance to fund that. So that's, that was not part of the designation, I'm just looking at, yeah.
So it kind of is involved, is kind of included, roughly?
That would be 5.4 million, 500, 5,418,130, if we include Marysai with that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Well, you know, I know Mr. Roberts is a champion of, of keeping taxes as low as possible, but I mean, that, that attitude is why we're in the fix we're in right now with the fair maintenance. And so, you know, I'm not going to support this amendment, I realize I'm not running again, but I happen to think this community, you know, can afford to pay a little more in property taxes, you know, if, if we're going to save buildings like Marysai and, you know, you know, it's just, you know, there's a real contradiction from Mr. Roberts tonight. He wants to maintain all services, but he doesn't want people to pay for it. And it gets a little frustrating.
So I have Mr. Cooper and then Mr. Roberts.
All right, I was just, finance probably has better numbers than I do, but my rough calculation was that, right now with the changes we made to the budget through tonight, including Marysai, and this is a little bit different way of looking at it, we're about 1.9, well, really close to $2 million over our reserve target amount. And so, for, just so folks have this in mind in terms of money to bring us to the target, if we, if we use 2 million, 1,989,478 is the number I came up with, that, you know, we could, we could use that either for tax relief, as Mr. Roberts suggests, or perhaps more money into facilities maintenance. However, I, I don't support bringing it down the full 5 million, because I think that that A takes us below the target reserve that we ought to have in place, and B, I think we've got to find a balance there. I think Mr. Lawrence made a pretty good point on that.
Okay, I have Mr. Roberts next.
So, as I've stated before, my point of view is, is that we should look at those services, look at what the taxpayers originally voted for, where we've gone with them, how we've grown them, and moderate those services to fit within a sustainable budget, i.e., one that we can do the ongoing preventative maintenance within what this community can afford, which obviously isn't the level that's been needed. And so we've got to do something. I have one more point. So I would say to Mr. Cooper that in the past, when I brought this motion up, which I do every year, that it's been modified by other members to amount that they felt more comfortable with. And so that's certainly open on the table to change the actual amount that we're taking out of general fund to cover the budget. And I would say what's important about taxpayer relief is that we still haven't come back up yet. Now, we expect to get there with the influx of military in a few years, but we're not there yet. And it would be great to provide a little tax relief to help the people who are having to pay one of the highest cost of livings in the country outside of rural Alaska. I can't remember the number, but I have, have those numbers, like utility bills 227% higher than the US average and all the other cost of living indexes all over 200 something percent. So they pay a lot extra, and so there's a reason we need to leave those taxes down, because the cost of livings don't even usually include all the taxes. And so it's important for us, we can't compare ourselves to other countries, other people, counties who have lower tax rates or higher tax rates, and say, well, we're low compared to them, because we've got those cost of livings that offset that. And so we've got to keep in mind our community and what they can afford overall, and taxes play a role in that. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Major, Mr. Cooper, and Mr. Lawrence.
So I, sorry, that was, that was a good laugh.
We must meet.
So I just want to comment on, on Mr. Roberts' point, and I guess the, the one challenge that I have with, with that, I mean, yes, we have a very high cost of living, however, we also do enjoy not having to pay a state income tax. And granted, there are some other states out there that have a lower cost of living than we do, and they don't have a state income tax, but, you know, I, I think, I, trying to just compare us on the cost of living or an income tax is really probably not the, the right comparison to make. And, and we have heard from a lot of people who want to see services increased, but yet nobody wants to pay more for it, or, you know, have those services reduced. And so there is certainly that, that challenge. Thank you.
I see Debbie has her hand up.
I was just going to note that a draw from fund balance for Marysai plus Mr. Roberts' motion would put you at 14 point, 14.6% of your, compared to where your target is.
Thank you, of 19%, right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. I have Mr. Cooper next.
All right, one point and then one question. And I would, the point is, I'd, not that anybody probably has this with them, but if you go back to the original budget presentation from the administration, page 36 has a historical list of mill rates and where we're at historically. And we're doing a lot better in 2018 than we were in 1999, and we're still below the historical area-wide mill rate average overall. So our mill rate is, is actually doing pretty good when you look at it as a trend. And the question I have for the administration is, you know, every year we talk about FMR and money in facilities maintenance, is, do you see a need for, for more money in facilities maintenance right now? And if so, how much money would you like to see in facilities maintenance? My checkbook is only so big though.
That's the problem. Your checkbook is only so big. And realistically, we need more money than you could possibly put in because of the hole we've been digging. And I've been explaining that, so, you know, whatever you think we can afford, we can use on maintenance. Our backlog is hundreds of millions of dollars, and there's no way we're going to take care of that in one year or two years. It's, it's a long-range plan to dig out of there. And so we need to change our business model and do things differently than the way we have been, and just quit trying to put Band-Aids on things and hope that something's going to change in the future, that we'll get money from somewhere and, you know, we need to be more realistic, we need to be real Alaskans and stand on our own two feet. It's, the state's not going to turn around in a hurry. They've been, I think, worse than us as far as deferring maintenance. They have over a billion-dollar problem on deferred maintenance. So when they get more revenue there, it's going to go into their problem, not ours. And so what could we use? We could use 5 million, we could use 10 million on it. Right now, we don't even have the staff, though, that could spend that much. We'd have to add some staff in Public Works to be able to manage that much money. So without adding to their staff, we could certainly use a couple million dollars more right now and manage that than what we put in, in the account. In, in theory, we really could use $50 million a year, and we've got five and a half. So how much do you want to add? There you go, get your checkbook out.
And I guess that goes to the point that my preference, I, would be to spend this, this money that I see over our target reserve on facilities maintenance, and I don't know if I can move to amend Mr. Roberts' motion the way it's currently structured, or if we just make it a separate motion. But I guess I would, I would, I would speak in this year against using extra fund balance to, to buy down essentially the mill rate, and instead put that money where I think we have a greater need right now, which is in facilities maintenance reserve. And I would, I would look to put about 1.9 million into, from fund balance into FMR.
Okay, so, yeah, I understand. I'm just going to read the amendment back because the clerks needed it, and it sounds like if they don't have it, there are others that are probably unclear about what it says. So it says, any amount in budget over the amount exceeding, exceeded last year's mill rate will be taken from general fund to keep the mill rate flat, essentially. Is that close enough, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the amendment in front of us. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Mayor? Are you, okay, Mr. Roberts?
So in support of this, and to, to speak somewhat against what was just mentioned as an alternative, I would like to point out that at the moment, we still need to come up with some amount of money, of which I'm not sure what that amount is, that we are over budget on currently, after getting through this process. So we can't just take the money and put it all in FMR. We still have this chunk of money that has to be taken care of, which usually comes out of general fund if we're going to do that. So I just want to make sure everyone remembers that.
So I have a lot of hands.
So before this motion, and in your substitute, we are balanced, and we do have, and after the motion for community planning, we have, let me just get down to where, we're putting a little bit of money to fund balance based on, we're putting 210,102 fund balance.
So we actually had more cost decreases during the Finance Committee than increases?
We had decreases, plus we had additional revenue that came in for community assistance.
Okay, well, I wasn't here for the last Finance Committee meeting, so.
So we did put, in your substitute, you'll see that we are putting 225,102 fund balance with the community planning amendment. I just reduced that by that $15,000.
I was going to say, that's what I did in my calculations too, so that's on the same page.
Anything more, you're next up.
That was it.
No, Mr. Lawrence is next up.
I wanted to respond to Mr. Roberts' statistics regarding the cost of living in this community. He's right, utilities were the highest, weren't some of the highest utility rates in the country, I think twice as high as Anchorage is, which puts us at a huge disadvantage. Medical care in Alaska is, is absurdly high. Housing, you compare us with, with San Francisco, we've got low costs of housing. Food, back when, when I first got up here, late 70s, early 80s, food was incredibly expensive, much more expensive than outside. That's not the case anymore. Food is only slightly higher, here than I would, than in the lower 48, by and large. So the point I want to make, and I used to work for the Consumer Price Index, for the Bureau of Labor Statistics, collecting data on the Consumer Price Index here in Fairbanks. And I, I can assure you that our cost of living does not exceed the rest of the country anywhere near as much as it did 20 years ago, 10 years ago.
Okay, Mr. Lajewski, you're next.
Is there anybody after me?
Um, oh, well, not this time, but.
You've got me on the main motion, I hope.
It's on the.
If you don't have anything, I can make an amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
So the amendment to the amendment, I don't have the exact language, but the content is quite clear. The money that's left in excess of the recommended, what's it, 17% in the general fund, I want 50% to go to facility maintenance reserve and 50% to go to buying down the tax cap. Second.
Okay, let me see what I can do to restate that.
My number, no rate. Yes, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
I second, you're second.
So, so the original amendment was any amount in the budget over the amount exceeded last year's mill rate, taken from general fund mill rate to keep it flat. I'm not sure how we would amend that, maybe back to, we may need to vote on it and then come back to your amendment.
Okay, well, I think, if I can withdraw that, then I think I can just amend the current one to say 50% of the excess of the target reserve going to buy down the mill rate, rather than to the point of last year's mill rate.
So any amount in budget over amount exceeded last year's mill rate, taken from general fund. You want to say 50% taken from?
We're going to use up, basically 50% of our surplus to buy down the mill rate.
I think we'd be better served as, as this is written to, to.
Okay, I will withdraw my, withdraw my.
Someone can see.
Once it's on the floor and been seconded, then you're going to have to either vote on it or to withdraw it. There can't be no objection to withdraw, but we have Mr. Gray online, so you're going to have to vote whether to withdraw it.
Unless someone can see a, a way to do it.
So we can vote to withdraw the amendment, as long as everybody.
Yeah, I, I move to withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
Is there a second?
We've already got it here, if you just want to withdraw it, we can.
Just vote on, withdraw it.
Withdrawing Lajewski's? Okay. Because it was seconded, so please call the roll. I'm withdrawing the amendment to the amendment. Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yep.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none, that amendment is withdrawn and we're back to the original amendment. Are we ready to, Mr. Quist, were you on that, or you were on the main?
On the main motion.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on the proposed amendment, and do you want me to read it again, or are you fairly clear what it says? Okay, clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
And Ms. Dodge?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, 8-1. And who, Mr. Lajewski, you were the second one on that. All right, I wrote down, okay. So we're back to the amendment as amended. Mr. Roberts, you were up next, I think.
Oh, I was going to say that, even though I wish that amendment hadn't been put on at this point, I certainly support the concept of trying to help the community by lowering that mill rate. And while there may be a lot of people who are willing to pay more to try and get a higher level of service, there's certainly plenty of people struggling with their utility bills and the expenses we do have that are still high, though I agree with Mr. Lawrence, they're not as bad as they used to be. But there's still people who need that financial relief, and I'm going to look out for them, and I'm going to vote for this amendment.
Okay. Anybody else on the amendment as amended? Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I don't think it's, it's in the best interest, frankly, of this community to reduce the fund balance for the purpose of reducing the mill rate. This fund balance is going to be utilized, you know, for a lot of things coming up. It's not like it's, we've got money to burn just because we're over 17% right now. I suspect that won't be the case in the course of this next fiscal year, that it's going to be reduced. And, and therefore, you know, I urge this Assembly to, to, to look at the big picture, look at what, what financial straits this borough is in, and frankly, try to, you know, the, the tax cap is, is restricting our revenue more than we can afford, frankly. So let's not, you know, let's not make it worse by reducing the mill rate below what, what we can collect under the tax cap.
Mr. Cooper?
Thanks, I was thinking about how to, I guess, raise my point most efficiently procedurally, I think this will be the best way to do it. So I'm going to move to amend the amendment to, rather than do a 50/50 split, that 100% in excess of the 17% reserve after the budget adjustments have been made goes into facilities maintenance reserve.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that the amendment be amended to read, move 100% of the general fund balance that is in excess of the 17% reserve after all budget adjustments have been made to the facilities maintenance reserve and account, and delete, and the other 50% to be used to buy down the mill rate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. On the amendment, yes, would you like to speak to here? A second, like, speak to that.
Well, just briefly, I've got a question. How much, how, from the, from finance, how much money are we talking about again as far as what, approximately how much money are we talking about as far as the, how much the fund, general fund exceeds in the 17%?
If you take into account what you did in Finance Committee and the Marysai, we're looking at an excess of just over 2 million.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Cooper?
Say, and I'll know, there may be some change to that with IGCP and, and other things still too, so it could get smaller, any other appropriations, if any, that we make here tonight, but I, I don't want to belabor the point, I think I've made my point about facilities maintenance, so.
Anybody else on the amendment to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
We have a finite amount of money. I think it's more appropriately applied to facilities maintenance than it is to tax relief.
Okay. You appear to be ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and I won't rule that it's going to, hearing the main amendment. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Tackey?
I'll be first.
Do you want me to read it again, or are you, are you clear what we're doing?
I'm not the first one. Um, yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, 8-1. And who, Mr. Lajewski, you were the second one on that. All right, I wrote down, okay. So we're back to the amendment as amended. Mr. Roberts, you were up next, I think.
Oh, I was going to say that, even though I wish that amendment hadn't been put on at this point, I certainly support the concept of trying to help the community by lowering that mill rate. And while there may be a lot of people who are willing to pay more to try and get a higher level of service, there's certainly plenty of people struggling with their utility bills and the expenses we do have that are still high, though I agree with Mr. Lawrence, they're not as bad as they used to be. But there's still people who need that financial relief, and I'm going to look out for them, and I'm going to vote for this amendment.
Okay. Anybody else on the amendment as amended? Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I don't think it's, it's, it's in the best interest, frankly, of this community to reduce the fund balance for the purpose of reducing the mill rate. This fund balance is going to be utilized, you know, for a lot of things coming up. It's not like it's, we've got money to burn just because we're over 17% right now. I suspect that won't be the case in the course of this next fiscal year, that it's going to be reduced. And, and therefore, you know, I, I urge this Assembly to, to, to look at the big picture, look at what, what financial straits this borough is in, and frankly, try to, you know, the, the tax cap is, is restricting our revenue more than we can afford, frankly. So let's not, you know, let's not make it worse by reducing the mill rate below what, what we can collect under the tax cap.
Mr. Cooper?
Thanks, I was thinking about how to, I guess, raise my point most efficiently procedurally, I think this will be the best way to do it. So I'm going to move to amend the amendment to, rather than do a 50/50 split, that 100% in excess of the 17% reserve after the budget adjustments have been made goes into facilities maintenance reserve.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that the amendment be amended to read, move 100% of the general fund balance that is in excess of the 17% reserve after all budget adjustments have been made to the facilities maintenance reserve and account, and delete, and the other 50% to be used to buy down the mill rate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. On the amendment, yes, would you like to speak to here? A second, like, speak to that.
Well, just briefly, I've got a question. How much, how, from the, from finance, how much money are we talking about again as far as what, approximately how much money are we talking about as far as the, how much the fund, the general fund exceeds in the 17%?
If you take into account what you did in Finance Committee and the Marysai, we're looking at an excess of just over 2 million.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Cooper?
Say, and I'll know, there may be some change to that with IGCP and, and other things still too, so it could get smaller, any other appropriations, if any, that we make here tonight, but I, I don't want to belabor the point, I think I've made my point about facilities maintenance, so.
Anybody else on the amendment to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
We have a finite amount of money. I think it's more appropriately applied to facilities maintenance than it is to tax relief.
Okay. You appear to be ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and I won't rule that it's going to, hearing the main amendment. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Tackey?
I'll be first.
Do you want me to read it again, or are you, are you clear what we're doing?
I'm not the first one. Um, yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, 8-1. It is adopted 8-1. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Cooper, do you have any motions you'd like to make?
Like the IGCP motion.
Okey-dokey.
I move to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect or incorporate the assembly changes. Second.
So it's a move by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect slash incorporate the assembly changes? Discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yep.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, 9-0. It's unanimously adopted?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I guess a question for the administration. I, the motion for fund balance to balance the budget, that does not need to be made, correct?
No, it does. It does not. You just need to make the final budget motion.
Right, thank you, just wanted to double check, I was, I never, he was right.
Okay. Does that mean you have another motion, Mr. Cooper?
Not in front of me.
Okay, there it is. Ask him, he shall receive.
I move to allow financial services to make the necessary budget adjustments to
If you take into account what you did in Finance Committee and the Mary-Sai, we're looking at an excess of just over $2 million.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Cooper?
And I don't know, there may be some changes to that with IGCP and other things still too, so it could get smaller, any other appropriations, if any, that we make here tonight, but I don't wanna belabor the point. I think I've made my point about facilities maintenance, so.
Anybody else on the amendment to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
We have a finite amount of money. I think it's more appropriately applied to facilities maintenance than it is to tax relief.
Okay. You appear to be ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and I won't rule that it's going to carry the main amendment. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Tackey?
I'll be first.
Do you want me to read it again, or are you clear what we're doing?
I'm not the first one.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Lojeski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 8-1. It is adopted 8-1. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Cooper, do you have any motions you'd like to make?
Like the IGCP motion.
Okey-dokey.
I move to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect or incorporate the assembly changes.
Second.
So, it's a move by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect slash incorporate the assembly changes. Discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 2-0. It's unanimously adopted?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I guess a question for the administration. The motion for fund balance to balance the budget, that does not need to be made, correct?
No, it doesn't. It does not. You just need to make the final budget motion.
Right. Thank you. Just wanted to double check, I was remembering it was right.
Okay. Does that mean you have another motion, Mr. Cooper?
Not in front of me.
Okay, there it is. Ask me, each shall receive.
I move to allow financial services to make the necessary budget adjustments to balance the approved budget and finalize the approved budget ordinance.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect slash incorporate the assembly changes. Discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to roll. I vote, that is. Okay. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 8-1. It is adopted 8-1. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Cooper, do you have any motions you'd like to make?
Like the IGCP motion.
Okey-dokey.
I move to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect or incorporate the assembly changes.
Second.
So, it's a move by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect slash incorporate the assembly changes. Discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 2-0. It's unanimously adopted?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I guess a question for the administration. The motion for fund balance to balance the budget, that does not need to be made, correct?
No, it doesn't. It does not. You just need to make the final budget motion.
Right. Thank you. Just wanted to double check, I was remembering it was right.
Okay. Does that mean you have another motion, Mr. Cooper?
Not in front of me.
Okay, there it is. Ask me, each shall receive.
I move to allow financial services to make the necessary budget adjustments to balance the approved budget and finalize the approved budget ordinance.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make the necessary budget adjustments to balance the approved budget and finalize the approved budget ordinance. Discussion, debate?
So...
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Was this the IGCP one?
No, we just did that one.
This is the budget.
This is the budget. This is necessary budget adjustments.
It's just adjustments.
This is the pro forma one.
No comments.
Okay. For the listening public, these are all kind of pro formas that help give financial services the tools they need to mop up little pieces, parts, as they need to. Discussion, debate? I see none, clerk, I think we're ready to roll. I vote, that is. Okay. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 8-1. It is adopted 8-1. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Cooper, do you have any motions you'd like to make?
Like the IGCP motion.
Okey-dokey.
I move to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect or incorporate the assembly changes.
Second.
So, it's a move by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey to allow financial services to make any necessary budget adjustments to IGCP to reflect slash incorporate the assembly changes. Discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? 2-0. It is adopted 8-1. With that, I find my agenda, I believe, that we're probably to... Thank you. That's 'cause I'm ready. Well, we're on citizens' comments. So, this is citizens' comments, let me be, each per, it's items other than those appearing on the agenda. So, we, at this time, if someone wants to come and speak for three minutes on an item other than that appearing on the agenda, and what was on the agenda tonight really was the budget, so... Mr. Doughty? Come on. Please give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood. You'll have three minutes.
Hey, Mr. Doughty. D O W D Y. Leighton Steel Creek Road. I would like to speak on old conduct of the citizens, speaking myself last week. Somebody was a little bit upset maybe when I said that was management, but this borough goes a lot of money into tourism. These buildings that are being dominated for destruction is a big part of tourism, and they have been neglected, not just for this administration but others. So, I didn't think I was wrong there, and you're all going on, we need more assets for this community. In my opinion, you have the people of this community. There is many people that will work on these buildings, sternwheeler, whatever. They have got to be given a chance. They will come up with ideas that the administration will never think of, of the individuals. So, please, give the citizens a chance. If you don't get any criticism, you're not doing your job, because I'm not gonna agree with any and every one of you, and you're not gonna agree with me. But if we bring it out in the open, we can deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Let's see, Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
Yeah, we just got a letter today from a constituent who was a contractor talking about coming in and doing work at Mary-Sai. Do you believe that we should allow volunteers to come in and work on some of these facilities for us?
Yes, I don't think we have any choice, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Doughty? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you for staying with us for this evening and listening attentively and participating. Anybody else wish to come down and speak on citizens' comments? Items not on the agenda? I'm seeing no one coming forward, so we're gonna close those citizens' comments, and that will take us to assembly member comments. We'll start, Mr. Gray, we'll give you the first bite of the apple. Do you have any comments you wish to make?
I have no further comments.
Thank you very much.
It's late for me.
Yes, it's really late for you. Thank you for staying with us. Ms. Major?
Just a comment that I won't be here again next week. I'll be traveling for work, leaving this weekend, so, but I'll be thinking about you.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I guess, I wasn't gonna be here next week either, but is that meeting actually happening? We put it in the calendar, I thought maybe it was a placeholder.
At this time, we don't have a meeting next week. We do, oops. At this time, we have a special meeting, I believe it should be, no, I won't curse it by saying it'll be short.
Okay.
Mr. Quist?
I have no comment, thank you.
Mr. Cooper?
I guess a quick comment since Mr. Doughty is still here. I will comment that I don't find Mr. Doughty's comments problematic. I think you're right, we probably don't always agree on everything, but I appreciate the input that Mr. Doughty provides. I think some of the comments that were referred to in editorial paper, or some of the more vitriolic and ad hominem comments that we're, at least from my perspective, hearing more of, where people are being called names or liars or untruthful and things like that, and I'll speak for myself in saying that I think that we can disagree about ideas and policy, but when people start, you know, name-calling, that's, I think, the emphasis of that editorial with which I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Tackey?
Oh, I have no comment, thanks.
Mr. Lojeski?
Yeah, we made it. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I can, I think Mr. Doughty has one pretty good point about maybe getting citizens to work on some of these facilities. I don't see that working when we're talking, even a contractor, you know, getting involved in, let's say, with Mary-Sai, but what cursed me is the Riverboat in the Nana. I know I paint, you know, the porn school that I'm in painted, helped paint that boat back in the 80s, and I think that, you know, that sternwheeler is one asset in this community that untrained hands can do a decent amount of work on, so, you know, I'd like to see that happen. This is my sixth budget. It's been one of the hardest budgets, actually, that I've had to deal with, and, you know, I'm glad it's over.
Mr. Mayor, do you want a second bite of the apple? Do you have any comments you want to make?
Well, this is my first chance to make comments, so, not necessarily second. I absolutely agree, it's nice to use volunteers. I expanded the volunteer program, working on our facilities when I was at Parks and Rec. I absolutely believe in it. There are some things they can't do, however, you know, certified people are required for a number of different tasks, so, we use them where we can, and it's an excellent resource in our community. I completely agree. We are the, we're the proud recipients of a statewide award for having the outstanding recycling community of 2017 that was presented to us down in Anchorage a week ago, and a cute little recycled award that I really enjoyed. Anyway, I might just pass that along. Take a look at the melted drinking cups that were recycled to make the award. Today is Senior Recognition Day. We had a great lunch over at the Carlson Center with, I think, six centurions, over 100 years old. Yeah, pretty awesome, some real spry 100-year-old folks too. I was quite impressed, quite impressed, so. Kudos to all our seniors in our community and what they do for us, and hopefully we all get to live that long too and enjoy our community. Lots going on right now this weekend. There's three different walks. There's the Walk for Charity Friday night, sponsored by Alaska Travel Industry and Explore Fairbanks, starting at 6:00, and then Saturday, there's two separate walks. The Heart Walk starts downtown at Veterans Memorial Park. 9:00 check-in, 10:00 start for the walk, and then in the afternoon, there's Walk a Mile in My Shoes over at Pioneer Park that starts at 1:00. So, lots going on in the community, for sure. It's also Economic Development Week. We've had a number of activities this weekend. I had a very nice meeting just a few hours ago up at the university with our Association of Defense Communities, folks that have been in town all week, did a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday and helped us look for opportunities where we can bring the university, the community, and the military together and build bridges that are mutually beneficial for all of us, and I think there's a lot of opportunities when you look at the expertise up at the university and just the economic impact of the military in this community is huge. So, hopefully, we can pursue more of that. There were some ideas put on the table that we're gonna put a little energy in pursuing too as we go forward. You probably, and lastly on my list here, you probably remember from our DEC and EPA presentations in the community, we've got a lot of work to do as far as a new SIP plan for serious non-attainment, and one of the recommendations is that a stakeholders group be organized in our community to take a look at possibilities for what we can do with air quality and how we can respond to some of the suggestions coming from the EPA.